All right, good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order.
No.
Sorry, oh, sorry. I just looked over, I didn't see you.
You ready?
I'm ready. Madam Mayor.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order at this time. We're gonna start with the pledge allegiance of the flag. I'd love for Mr. Eddie Lorton to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll for the Reno City Council.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Breckus, Dewar, Delgado, McKenzie, Jarden, absent at this time, Bobzine, Shevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, I'm gonna hand it over to the Planning Commission.
Can I get a roll call for the Planning Commission, please?
Yes, Gower, absent at this time, Johnson.
Here.
Hawkins, Olivas.
Here.
Reno.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Waiske. Mr. Chair, you do have a quorum of the Planning Commission.
All right, at this time, Madam Clerk will take public comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, our first public comment is from Tammy Holt Still, followed by Craig Smyers.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Planning. For the record, I'm Tammy Holt Still. I am a non-flooded resident in Lemon Valley, and one of the faces you are recently gonna recognize as the Lemon Valley-Swan Lake Recovery Committee. At this time, it was requested by the Governor to set up this committee, and we have done so. I am before you today to express our willingness to work along with the city of Reno in better planning of Lemon Valley, which will also in turn help the North Valleys. After hours and hours of research, I can say with most confidence that if there was better building and planning controls and practices in Golden Valley instead, the issues before us would have not has been so catastrophic. Washoe County was, or is, or is or was in the hot seat for us residents, because we reside in Washoe County. But the city of Reno, with the legislative power, lost sight of what it means to live in a rural area, and are only looking to grab land and to destroy our way that we live in the country. It's time to stop, and Lemon Valley and Swan Lake Recovery Committee are going to assist you in growing with more foresight and purpose and not just greed. Lemon Valley derived and the land adjacent to the road are now underwater, and it belongs to the city of Reno. It's time to step up and assist Washoe County. Where am I at? This is Washoe County, okay. It's time that the Lemon Valley and Swan Lake Recovery Committee... Oh, wait a minute, sorry. There are other issues to go along with this. One, stop pumping from Silver Lake into Swan Lake, which goes through your sewer system and then down the creek into Swan Lake. Two, the sewer plant already does 2 million gallons of water per day into Swan Lake, which is the maximum based on three different reports I have read to date. However, this allocation during wet years, like we had this year, without the measurements in place, have caused the flooding that you see that we have now. Two, the rumors of a dead airport and a hub for cargo traffic, and Lemon Valley becoming the hub for the warehousing of that cargo, isn't gonna happen. Three, or four, it's time to address existing legislation regarding annexation of lands to the city of Reno, and to change and create legislation of feathered planning. This way, the rural areas are still rural for the residents that are out there, and we, the Lemon Valley Recovery Committee, look forward to working side by side to make a living in Nevada as a great place, and places where others want to visit, which is the biggest little city in the world.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Craig Smyers, followed by Eddie Lorton.
Members of the Reno City Council and the Planning Commission, we all know that it's gonna get a lot hotter around here, everywhere. Native plants and animals are gonna face some harsh times ahead. Forest service studies predict a loss of at least half of our Sierra Mountain forest trees by 2100. Our city is on critical edge habitat between the desert and the mountain forests. What we do in Reno has a significant impact on surrounding wildlife. I like the proposed master plan, except for what's not in it. This master plan does not place limits on sprawl. Non-contiguous annexation should be explicitly excluded from the master plan. Contiguous annexation should involve a land abutting a substantial border with Reno, not a thin strip of land or a road. Clearly laid out limits on sprawl are the best protection against future abuses of annexation. There are serious municipal costs to building up the mountainsides, pumping stations, plowing roads. There are environmental costs. Building higher up thins populations and reduces the diversity of species. Deer need to forage at lower elevations when the snow is deep. Let's keep our foothills beautiful. How high up is too far up? There are wildlife maps, tables on pumping costs, all of that. There is an altitude that is too high. Boulder, Colorado limits development to below a certain altitude. I occasionally speak on other topics, but really, protecting wildlife habitat is the reason I'm involved in local politics. I'm here because of sprawl. If Winamucca Ranch had been developed into spring mountain, that would have been disastrous. There's nothing in this master plan to curb the worst abuses of sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Eddie Lorton, followed by Danny Kleas.
Hi, City Council, for the record, my name's Eddie Lorton, and I'd like to speak today on, and I wanna be as nice as possible when we talk about this. And it's gonna be in regards to this amendment to the charter, okay? So there's been a council member that is a council member that decided to do an amendment to this charter change, and it disrespected the whole council as a whole, plus the Charter Review Committee that put in a year and a half of working time. So I'd think at this point in time to salvage my reputation would be to pull that amendment, because it's never gonna pass anyway. And there's a point in time when you gotta realize you're being used by your friends. So instead of letting the Assembly and Senate go around and try to negotiate this thing, there's times we've been friends. And I always want what's best for the city. I put my money where my mouth is. We fought for it. But to do it in like a clandestine way in the middle of the night isn't the right way to do certain things. So I would hope this would be under consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lorton.
Danny Kleas, followed by Eric Holland.
My name is Danny Kleas. I live in Lemon Valley. Lemon Drive is still closed. City of Reno owns it. The land that goes from Lemon Valley Drive to the lake is owned by the city, too. It's time for you guys to step up, do something with that, to alleviate the water out of that lake. We have too many homes still underwater that need to be drained. The only way to do that, that I see, is you guys gotta dig up that land. Nobody wants to do it for some reason. I don't know why. Our mosquito population is so bad right now, it's not even funny. We gotta do something about that before more animals, more people get sick. Last thing I want is West Nile virus in any of my animals, or me, or my granddaughter, or my girlfriend. Another thing I have a problem with, you guys started building, or let somebody build, start building apartments at Military and Lemon Valley Drive. Now that lot is empty. There's no equipment there, a bunch of moved dirt. What's gonna happen if we have a spring or summer flood rain? All that mud is gonna go right back into Swan Lake. There's no sagebrush to protect it. We don't know what's going on. Not a pretty sight either when you drive by every day. Something has to be done. Now you guys have a proposal to build on the base of Peavine Mountain. Don't do it. You're gonna ruin my view. You already have, by letting the warehouses go up between 395 and Old 395. You look out my back window, alls I see is Amazon. Not something pretty to look at at night. Not something pretty to look at during the day. But yet, you guys keep building warehouses, blocking my view. You guys went and built a warehouse down there at Galena Creek to block other people's view. You guys don't want billboards 40 feet in the air to block the views. Why do you wanna block my view? I've been looking at that mountain ever since 1973. It's a beautiful mountain. Don't ruin it anymore. Another thing, we need more police. Stead, police are called every day, every night. Lemon Valley, we get the same thing, but we have to deal with the sheriffs. There's too much of that, and now that I have to go through stead, I sure don't wanna be shot. I sure don't wanna have my car ran into because somebody's running. It's not fair. You guys need to step up and do something about it before you build anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Eric Holland, followed by Tracy Hall.
Good afternoon. I appreciate both the opportunity and the ability to speak. It's a little bit of an inside joke. And basically, for several months, on my bucket list, which the recent stroke I had made me start thinking about, I'm not gonna live forever, I've got three things I wanna do. One is to travel with my girlfriend and paint and draw. The other is to get Winamucca Ranch preserved, one way or the other. And when I look at the city council, I notice a change from when I started talking to the city council. Everyone is now younger than me. It used to be the other way around, but my hope with that is that this is a new chance and a new beginning. And one great way to make this a new beginning and a clear break with some of the things of the past is to get this beautiful property out of consideration for large-scale development. Here's another picture. I'm gonna be showing you guys a lot of pictures, because I'm far more articulate this way than I am verbally. This is the plain air of Dogskin Mountain, not Winamucca Ranch itself. It's south of there, in a place called the Marshall Ranch. But if they had gotten their way in 2006, it'd be a four-lane road running through this area. It wouldn't look like this. It's awesome to be able to go 30 miles from here, part of it is gravel roads. And I'm an entrepreneur. I've been making my living selling art, drawing cartoons, and teaching art classes for a long time. And I'd also like to be able to offer gambling and gamboiling tours. You go gamble in the casinos downtown, and then you go watch the antelope gamble up north, 30 miles away. I've been, there's a place I can show you all, and I'm happy to take you there, although you'll have to drive, because I still can't drive. But I have a car available. I have my Subi still, but if you don't mind driving, I will take you to this place. The next time I come, I'm going to show you a painting that I'm working on of this place, but it is a place where you see wild horses and antelope. Like you go up there, and they're just running around, and I've been there six times, and the antelope have been out four times. I can't believe it. It's awesome. So... I came here from Alaska, partly because I wanted to be closer to my daughter, mostly because I wanna be close to my daughter, who lived in San Francisco, but I couldn't deal with California. So I came here. This is the nearest place to California that I could stand to live. And so, like some other speakers, I'm asking you, well, I'm gonna just say, don't Californicate this place. Let's keep it small, localized, and cater to that huge tourist market. I'm gonna turn around and turn my back on you, but not really turn my back on you, but I'm going to show the other people behind me the painting, and then you get to read what's on the back of my shirt, which basically says, "I like my state wild, my beer cold, and my music loud." So I'm the Nevada Wilderness Project around 2000. This is the painting here. And I wanna be able to, it's just awesome to live in a place where there's wilderness 30 miles away. I think the changes downtown have been fantastic, by the way.
Eric, you're doing so well. You look great.
Thank you.
I am, I know, wow.
You're doing fantastic.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Tracy Hall, followed by Sam Dene.
Hi, Tracy Hall. Thank you for the opportunity to approach this. I am a Washoe County resident, currently live, well, my home is in Lemon Valley. I have some pictures here today. We are in temporary housing still to this day. This is my home, right here. Okay, these pictures were taken a week ago. I am asking city of Reno to please, you guys are out there building like crazy. We live out there because we wanted a rural area. It's not a rural area anymore. My horse is currently in Cold Springs. My chickens are in stead. I have a rooster in the front of Lemon Valley. I'm being told by the Washoe County, my temporary housing is possibly up at the end of June. We have nowhere to go. You guys want to be out there building, but you please take us residents into consideration. We have nowhere to go. We're middle-aged, my husband and I. We're a small family business here in Reno, so we contribute to the community. We wanna be taken into consideration. No one has been out there to help us. We go out and check on our home every other day. We are bombarded with mosquitoes. You walk by one of our trees that happened to be in water, and you get swarmed with mosquitoes. We need some help out there, and you guys are out there making money, selling property, building. We wanna be part of a solution that the city of Reno comes up with. We need something done with Swan Lake. We have 10 acres out there, and we have maybe an eighth of an acre left. At the end of June, what are we gonna be in an RV? We have to go spend money on an RV to live on that little piece of property? We have nowhere to go. We're asking the city of Reno to please, please, stop building. All we see are warehouses, dirt being moved, water just being bombarded. My home is part of Swan Lake right now. We are so stressed out, and we just need a solution. And we're asking the city of Reno to help. I know we're just these little tiny people to you guys, but we matter. We are part of the community. Like I said, we're a small family business that have been in this town since 1974. That should mean something to somebody. I would just like you guys to please, I want somebody to keep these. When you guys look at these, can think of my five-year-old granddaughter that has no property to inherit now, because we don't even know if it's safe to rebuild when it's time. Our septic is still under two and a half feet of water. When it comes another year, is it gonna even accept anything? Because the ground is so saturated, we'll have another winter by then. Is anybody thinking about us residents? Please consider that.
How can I give this to you? Thank you, Tracy. Yes, we just give them to the clerk, please?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, our last public comment is from Sam Dene.
Sam Dene, Sam D-N-A-Dene, that's me, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno, nice smiley face. Heart and soul and body and mind of Reno government. To put into perspective, I noticed we have the Planning Commission here and the City Council, the Reno City Council, and I noticed a tremendous gender gap, nobody else is pointing that out, tremendous gender gap on the Planning Commission. What's with that? Anyway, that's not really important. Men know as much as women, right? Everybody knows that, or vice versa. At any rate, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I've been to more city council meetings, I've been at more podiums than all of the citizens added together in Reno, Nevada. Does anybody want to argue that? I have 6,527 public testimonies. I would be on that side of the dais. I would be the mayor. No, I would be governor by now, except for two things. The wacko freak, RGJ media freaks, and the vote riggers, and I'm living proof that the vote riggers are in control of the voting system. And the makeup of our city council partially adapts to that also. Air Force Academy graduate, I got a better background than anybody up there, except maybe one, two, and they're all, "Which one has got a gut background like Sam?" Nobody has a background like Sam. Nobody can do what Sam can do. I am responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno. If anybody wants to argue it, please come up here. You got three minutes to challenge me. I say Burning Man. Here we got, I got a brand-new city manager for this town. I bet my $100 bill that she was gonna win, and then her opponent walked right out, just because Sam would put his bet on her. What we have here is the situation now, speaking of chutzpah, our dear mayor, our dear mayor has the chutzpah, and I don't even know why she did it. Anyway, she went down there and talked to some folks at the legislature and talked to them, and added a little rider onto a bill to allow her to become a queen, or the next mayor to be a queen or a king. And I'm not speaking against it or for it. I don't know why she did, I don't know why she did it. She's doing a pretty good job as it stands right now. And it's not gonna work. I got my $100 bill right here. Anybody in the audience wanna come up here and bet? I'm betting a $100 bill that her, and it's not much fun to have a loss on your record, but you're gonna have a loss on your record, and I don't even care one way or another, if she wants to become the queen. As long as I get my public comment, I'm happy, because I've lived with the fact that the vote riggers are in control of Reno, and maybe all of America for all I know, and I'm living proof. Because anybody who sees me, anybody who sees me, who do you want? Some milquetoast up there, or do you want a warrior who goes on the battlefields like Sam Dene? Is there anybody who wants to challenge that, and they're getting red faces up there, the whole thing? I'm not picking anybody in particular. I'm just saying, nobody, nobody is as great as Sam Dene. His savoir faire, sophistication, spunk and gumption, moxie, and natural charisma, and his haberdashery are only, nice smiley face, are only superseded, another smiley face. All of his greatness is only, look, and she's saying, "When's the three minutes up?" She's saying, "When's the three minutes?" Nice smiley face. My greatness and all of those wonderful things are only superseded by one thing, my humbleness. There's lots of smiley face. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, over, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Listener. Where'd he go? Okay, that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Sam. Good job. Good job.
Madam Mayor, I have no further general public comment today.
I need the guitar next time.
What?
I need your guitar next time, the guitar.
I know why you like me to bring my guitar.
All right, moving right along. At this time, item A4, approval of the agenda, may I get a motion from one of my council members? I got a... I like it. I like it, Councilmember McKenzie. I love you. All right, so I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Gonna send it to Vice Chair Johnson.
Planning Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? I got a motion from Commissioner Hawkins.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Waiske. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Back to you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, item B1, presentations, I'd like to turn it over to... I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Sabra Nui.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the fifth joint meeting of the City Council and Planning Commission during the master plan update process. Today's meeting serves as a check-in point as we draft and review different parts of the plan. Our focus today is on all of the draft policies for the updated plan. I'd like to introduce our master plan consultants. Darcy White is Director of Clarion Associates, and Matt Prosser is Vice President of Economic and Planning Systems, Inc. They will be leading us through today's agenda items. We also have staff of the City of Reno who will be assisting. Mr. Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, Eric Jensen, Community Development Director, and Sienna Reed, Senior Planner. At the beginning of their presentation, they're going to lay out today's meeting format. We have built-in time for discussion and public comment at different places during the presentations to ensure that we capture everyone's comments and are efficient with our time. I'd also like to introduce our facilitator for today's meeting. Haley Blondesley worked with us during the Phase One of the master plan. And Haley will be leading the discussion period during each item. We'll be calling directly on individuals and making sure we stick to the plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Manager, City Council Members and Planning Commission Members. For the record, Sienna Reed. I'm excited to be here with you today as we embark upon this next step in developing the new master plan. As our city manager mentioned, this is our fifth joint meeting opportunity to really check in, get your feedback and direction as we move forward with developing the new plan. And so today, for you, what we have are draft policies for you to take a look at and give us your feedback. Before diving into the review of those draft policies, I did want to walk you through the format of today's meeting, and then also provide you with a little bit of background on the master plan process to date that has produced the draft documents you have before you today. The draft policies are going to be reviewed as two agenda items. The first is Item B1, where we'll be looking at our draft design principles. And the second is Item B2, where we'll be looking at our draft citywide policies. For each of those agenda items, our goal is to really give a high-level presentation, giving you a sense of what is in those documents from a policy content perspective, because you do have those detailed documents in front of you at your place. After that overview, what we'll move to is a discussion on the drafts, and we will ultimately be looking for action today. As we move through those two agenda items, I did want to call out that we have three discussion points built into the meeting. The first is at the end of Item B1, so our draft design principles there. And then we have actually two discussion points built into Agenda Item B2, our citywide policies. And those will be kind of in the middle of that item, and then also at the end of that item. As mentioned, Haley is going to be facilitating our discussion points. She's going to be calling on City Council and Planning Commission Members directly, and then helping us to just generally stay on track. And so during those discussion points, what we'll be looking for is just to really delve into any questions and concerns, be able to provide clarification there, have the Planning Commission weigh in with additional background where that's relevant, given that the Planning Commission has been really diving deep into these policy documents over the past couple of months. And ultimately, in terms of action today, what we're looking for is the identification of really major modifications or fatal flaws with the policy documents that we need to be addressing as we move forward into our next round of revision. We are certainly happy to keep conversations open on more detailed line edits moving forward, but we can process those offline in the interest of staying focused on those kind of higher-level major modifications. Looking at where we've been over the master plan update process, we started with Phase One of this work about two years ago. This really began with an extensive community engagement process to develop our community's shared vision, values, and preferences. From there, with that vision in hand, what we embarked on was Phase Two of the master plan. That started in February of 2016, really translating the community vision into guiding principles and goals, those setting the foundations for the plan moving forward. Also, to frame up key policy choices, we developed a whole host of technical information, including a housing study, an employment study, and then also work on the fiscal impact of different land use scenarios. And during our last meeting, in December, our last joint meeting, we received direction from you on those key policy choices that were framed up. And those have been integrated into the draft documents that you have before you today. So at this point, we really are on the home stretch of getting the master plan in place. We are drafting the plan, have some implementation strategies still to also be working on. But assuming all goes well, we'll be looking to adopt the plan later this fall. Some of the key objectives for the new master plan, just to provide a quick overview or to ground this new plan in a vision that does reflect those community priorities during our Phase One vision, and looks forward in terms of emerging trends and best practices. Definitely want to build on our current foundation of policies in our existing master plans. We are leveraging those, and also building in recent city initiatives as well as best practice policies. Another component is a land use plan. We're working on updates to that portion of the master plan that really will help support alignment with residential and employment needs in the future, and what are our demands as we look forward. And also, we really want to make the plan much more user-friendly. So hopefully, you're starting to see that in some of the draft documents, really streamlining it, reducing kind of our plans within a plans, and also having a very clear through line all the way from what will be the bottom of the plan in terms of our implementation strategies, straight up to our guiding principles and goals, which connect back into our community's vision. The policy direction that was provided at the last joint meeting is also woven through the policy documents that you have before you. So you'll definitely note in terms of some familiar policy areas, various sections focusing on greater housing diversity, being clear that our infill and redevelopment priorities are centers and corridors within the McCarran Ring, and also supporting employment, whether that be knowledge workers or modern industrial businesses. Looking at the new organization for our updated master plan, what's really important to note is that all of the draft policies are guided by our plan foundations. So those key concepts that have been translated through to our guiding principles and goals. The policies that apply citywide are organized specifically by those eight guiding principles and supporting goals. And those were extensively reviewed by the community in April of 2016. Policies that apply to smaller, specific areas of the city include our design principles that are organized by our structure plan, as well as our updated land use plan map. We ultimately reviewed our area-specific policies with the public in February, and we continue to do additional work on our updated land use map. So as I previously mentioned, kind of one of our last pieces is the development of implementation strategies that will help us really track progress. Over time, really the life of this 20-year plan, how are we achieving progress towards those guiding principles and goals? As many of you know, community engagement in the master plan process to date has been absolutely stellar. The Phase One visioning work was extensive, and we reached over 6,000 people. Normally, as you start moving forward into drafting an actual master plan, we hear that you start to wane in terms of participation. But we've had very, very strong participation and a willingness of the residents to really dive into the policy work with us, which is fantastic. So over 2,500 people have participated thus far as we've been in our Phase Two work. And additionally, we continue to keep touch with our over 1,100 monthly subscribers, really trying to let people know what are those upcoming public input opportunities. Here's our next draft document. You know, we're going to be reviewing it at this point in time. Here's meetings, what we've heard. So really, very much trying to stay in touch on a monthly basis there, as well as ongoing coordination with our regional and local partners. And lastly, did want to highlight that the Planning Commission has been deeply engaged in developing the draft master plan with really extensive review and input on all of our interim work products using a variety of different formats. So some of those being small group discussions throughout, also regular agenda items, and then more recently, some very in-depth workshops on our design principles and citywide policies. So that they've really delved in deep to the documents that you have today, really considering all of the community input that we've heard to date, and providing a recommended draft to move forward with that incorporates that community input as well as their additional expertise. So with that, at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Darcy White. She's going to take you through our draft design principles.
Thank you, Sienna. Good afternoon, members of the Council and Planning Commission. Again, for the record, Darcy White with Clarion Associates. And also happy to be here today. As Sienna mentioned, the plan is really starting to come together in terms of substance. We spent a lot of time talking about concepts. We're really starting to get into the details. So we're looking forward to the discussion today. And starting with the design principles. Sienna mentioned that one of the objectives for the master plan process was really to make it more user-friendly, to streamline many of those plans within the plan. So the first section we're going to talk about, the design principles, really relate to the many center and corridor plans that you have today in the neighborhood plans. We had a lot of discussion about that early on. Is there a way to streamline that, to consolidate that? So this is really how we've tackled that challenge in the draft material. So we started with the structure plan framework, which really provides that highest level of guidance in terms of the growth framework for the community. So these are kind of broad concepts about different types of places in the community. So this is not meant to replace the land use plan. It's an extra tool that really helps us talk about the different needs and the different policy directions for different parts of the community. So this is supported directly by the design principles and then the land use plan map. So in terms of the role of these, this is really, as I said, guide that character and form in the different parts of the community. Ultimately, the master plan land use categories and then zoning really determine the specific details. But this provides that higher-level guidance of the types of characteristics, the types of development considerations that we want to provide as guidance in those different parts of the community. So in putting this together, I think you, those of you who are particularly the Planning Commission, very familiar in working with the center and corridor plans and the concepts that are within those, many of these policies are familiar to you. So we basically kind of taken apart all of those plans and restructured them under the new structure plan categories. So we've carried forward the policies that are still valid through those planning efforts. And we've added some supplemental ones in places to identify and to strengthen some of the things that we've heard from the community and from you through our prior discussions. So these have gone through a number of iterations, as Sienna mentioned, to get us to this point. So we've simplified the number of types of places. So we're kind of boiled down to five categories that I'll talk about briefly. So in terms of our centers and corridors, and just a reminder, this is really a concept that came out of the regional plan process. And so this is something that's been in the city's master plan for a number of years. And we've taken that concept and kind of refined that to really fit the needs of what the city wants to see and the vision for the city. So we've, for example, streamlined the number of regional centers down to two, really to reflect the prioritization of downtown is a really key focus for this process and moving forward. The convention center is our other regional center. So these would be the highest-intensity locations in the city, really our centers of tourism and activity. And so highest density, highest mix of uses, best served by transit in terms of those places in the community. We've also added a new center concept through this process, a community and neighborhood centers. And this is something that really came directly out of the public feedback in terms of the community really wanting to see more walkable places in the community where they can shop, they can, you know, go to restaurants, and just kind of places to be that they don't have to drive across town to kind of get to. So this idea of places within neighborhoods really was something that came out strongly in Phase One. So we've gone through a process of identifying those places that exist in the community today, and also making sure that it's clear that the city wants to see more of those in the future and providing some parameters for those in the plan. We've also made some adjustments to the types of corridors within the city. This is again, going back to the regional center, sorry, the regional plan. The concept of Todd corridors is something the city's been kind of dealing with and kind of implementing for a number of years. And this is really a new iteration of those concepts. And we've basically broken the original Todd corridors into two kind of tiers. And the city had started this process on the zoning end of things in the past couple of years. But this really reinforces that distinction between those most urban places in the city where you do have very frequent transit service and kind of higher-intensity uses desired. But recognizing that there are more suburban locations in the city, South Virginia corridor, for example, where applying minimum densities now, where you don't have those services in place, really hasn't worked as well as was intended. And so we've made some adjustments there to try to reflect where the priorities are based on the discussions with all of you, as well as to reflect the need to kind of really concentrate resources in terms of transit service and those types of resources in the future. We also have other kind of supporting corridors identified, neighborhood corridors, places like Wells Avenue, Keystone, kind of secondary corridors that really connect these other places in the community, and then the Greenway corridors. And this isn't a new concept, but I think tying it in with the other places in the city is kind of a new concept for the plan in terms of just emphasizing the importance of the Truckee River-Greenway, Steamboat-Greenway, recognizing that those linkages are really something that kind of tie the community together, and they're great amenities for the community. So employment areas, this is an area where we spent a fair amount of time. We had a lot of discussion with all of you about kind of, you know, how can the city really help provide more direction in its plan about the types of employment that you would like to see? And one of the recommendations that Matt had talked to us about in one of our prior meetings, about trying to be really clear about the types of employment that you would like to see in different locations, and what are you really trying to attract? So he'll talk a little bit more about some of the big-picture policies. But one of the first steps in doing that was to really look at, trying to classify the different types of employment areas we have within the city. So we've distinguished the industrial logistics areas, which are places, you know, near the Sted Airport, North Virginia Street, South Meadows, from areas like UNR, Dandini, where those are really more kind of innovation areas. Many of them are education-focused, research-focused, trying to provide that distinction. And we've actually added a third employment area based on discussions with the airport authority and wanting to really distinguish the role of those airports within the city in terms of the types of uses that are suitable there, employment uses that they would like to see there, and other mixes of uses. So those are different from other employment areas in the city. So getting into neighborhoods, this is an area, there's been a lot of interest in the plan. And I think building from the neighborhood plans that you had, and those ranged in age from, you know, early '80s to relatively recent. And so we'll talk about kind of how that played in. But we've basically tried to take a lot of the concepts that were addressed in the neighborhood plans that you have and apply those more broadly. So, you know, a lot of these best practices that, you know, maybe were kind of being applied in one particular neighborhood could be applied more broadly within the city. So all neighborhoods get the benefit of those policies. So we've got three different types of neighborhoods that I'll talk about here in a moment. But we do have some general neighborhood design principles, which really kind of take those key concepts we'd like to see in any neighborhood in terms of connectivity, housing options, all of those things that really support some of our other citywide policies that we've been talking about. In the central neighborhoods, this is areas generally within the McCarran Loop. And we have really different considerations here. A lot of infill considerations. These tend to be our more historic neighborhoods. A lot of different things that are addressed in the current neighborhood plans related to compatibility of infill. How do we transition to the higher-intensity corridors that we have next to us? Those types of considerations that come into play. We also have our outer neighborhoods, which are basically not within the loop, but also not in our foothills. So these are kind of our next tier of neighborhoods. Many of these, you know, kind of are between the 1960s era to '70s, that sort of thing. There are some undeveloped areas, some different kind of transitional issues. So we try to capture those distinctions between each of the neighborhoods. And then finally, we have our foothill neighborhoods, which have a whole different set of considerations that are somewhat unique from our other neighborhoods in the city. In particular, thinking about the natural context, we get into some hazard mitigation considerations and awareness of those issues, as well as natural resource protection. The other area to mention with the foothill neighborhoods is really this access to the public lands that surround the community. And that's really... public lands that surround the community, and that's really been an important consideration that we heard from the community and something we've tried to emphasize throughout the plan. So, one of the questions early on is really, you know, what, how will those neighborhood plans translate in the master plan? And what we've, what we've ended up kind of landing on is sort of a hybrid approach. We've consolidated a number of the older plans that are no longer valid, or they've kind of been implemented already, so we've retired some of them. We are proposing to carry forward the ones that are listed there, but we are, we've basically tried, we've gone through each of those plans, tried to carry forward all of the policies that are really critical, based on what we've heard. A number of those concepts are embedded in zoning already, but we've streamlined the number of plans overall. And then lastly, we have our design principles for sustainable development, and this really deals with, you know, a lot of issues ranging from kind of, you know, kind of natural resource protection all the way down to kind of how do we integrate solar into neighborhoods, and sort of the whole spectrum within that. This was an area we heard a lot of feedback from the community, particular interest and support for, but this really deals from the development end of things. We'll talk a little bit later about kind of the bigger picture, citywide considerations on this topic. So, in terms of review on the design principles, we did a round of public meetings in February, they were very well attended. We also had kind of an equal, almost equal number participate online, so we got a lot of feedback there. As Sienna mentioned earlier, the planning commission met and reviewed these in March, and we've also been working with partners in the region to talk about some of those concepts with them as well. So in terms of what we've heard overall, I think, you know, strong support for the direction that this is headed in terms of how these concepts are being played out. A lot of folks are interested in, you know, love these ideas, how are we going to implement them? And so kind of that desire to kind of get into more specifics. So, that's something we've heard continually through the processes, is really wanting to talk about implementation, so that will be a particularly interesting discussion. So, central neighborhoods, there are some ongoing conversations, Sienna and others have been involved in with the Newlands neighborhood and some of their work that they've done recently for the Newlands Heights National Historic District, so we've got some ideas about how to really pop out some of those concepts in the plan. A lot of interest in downtown revitalization, not surprisingly, and as I mentioned, a lot of the sustainability and resource protection issues are really top of mind for many members of the community. So I'm going to turn it over to Haley, and she's going to lead the discussion.
Perfect. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Haley Blondely, I'm going to be your facilitator for the day. I was involved with phase one of this process, and I'm excited to join you once more as we continue to build and grow. Ultimately, we're going to be going over the design principles in this discussion. Above, we've pointed out a bunch of key things that we can touch on, mostly comments, concerns, points of clarification that the commissioners can give to you moving forward. So we can go ahead and begin if you ever would like to start.
Jenny Brackus.
Just two preliminary comments. I appreciate the attention that's been given to concerns coming out of the Newlands neighborhood related to the kind of retirement of their plan. That was the first neighborhood plan, so it was kind of a beta, and other plans became more sophisticated and more relevant, but it's not that the Newlands needs are not there, and I think they're working on a hybrid, and so some of that'll come forward in the code, but I think it's still an ongoing discussion, and we've had some discussions with those folks who, you know, have been instrumental in working in the preservation of that old neighborhood. I want to thank the food policy people for their letter, I think everything they brought was great way to go and progress. Some of their comments are in there, some of them maybe go a little deeper than really needs to be at a master plan level, but I think it's all good, good stuff. Since the folks are here up from Sted and the North Valleys, I flagged, kind of a big flag for myself, concern, questions about really are we ready to go big and hard up into that airport area with logistics, you know? It's not freeway served, and that has to be, you know, something that's up there. So I think the council has a fundamental decision on that. The one question you're asking about of, do you want to keep that guiding principle, should we bring that now or later?
We will go ahead and get into the guiding principle.
Okay, okay. I guess just another thing is, I think there's too many spots where there's delegation of authority to other entities for their planning efforts, whether it's Washa County and their school siting criteria, other institutional uses in their master planning, the airport and the airport authority. I think we need to not say, you're in charge of your area institution, I think we need to recognize that it's our, our role, and I'm concerned, I don't see anything mitigating institutional creepage into other areas, and we know institutions creep, so I think that needs to get beefed up. I'll call out to the council that there's strong discussion, it's probably dated, that no medical marijuana up in the university area? Well, now we're talking about recreational marijuana. I don't know one way or the other if marijuana is appropriate up in the university area, I don't know use patterns, but, you know, it's certainly something that's moving across our state and region, and I, I just want to call out to others that we have a, kind of a, a hold on that. I think some of the gaming, particularly restricted gaming, needs a little discussion, you know, where restricted gaming is or is not. There's a lot of discussion about gaming, but it's rather cursory and doesn't go in deep enough. I think there's not much about grandfather uses, and I think we had a lot of uses that, you know, I think there needs to be some discussion about grandfather uses during the boom-bust, a lot of auto sales dealerships went down out of business on Virginia Street, and they were able to reestablish, even though that was in conflict with the plan area there. So I think somewhere that concept needs to, to go. Sounds like the mayor just went over and tried to put a clock on me, so I'll move forward, I appreciate that.
I want to make sure everyone gets the opportunity to just say council on Brackus.
Well, thank you. I, I heard the comment of, you know, a lot of minor details we'll get with folks otherwise, and I will prepare a more elaborate record that I will circulate to the people.
And I'd also add in that there will be opportunities for line-by-line edits for any of the council people if they would like to go ahead and send those into the planning commission.
It's a review draft, sure. Just encroachment of innovation areas into other areas, because, you know, the concept is you have these innovation employment areas, well, people like to live, the vision is also you can live and work where you are. So if those encroach, and then you don't have any residential, you're working against, against policies. There's a, there's a few things architecturally that get in about ADUs, which is a high priority for me being subor, being compatible in design. I don't think they need to be compatible in design or finishes, I think they need to be subordinate in massing and scale to the primary. I think that's how an ADU ordinance will be written out.
And with that council person, I want to make sure that we get everybody else involved in here also.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to comment on what's already been said or add something new?
Thank you. Can we make sure that other commissioners and council are called upon? Sure. I just have a few more. That same language is in renovations and additions, so that architectural compatibility theme, I just don't know if that's, and there's an architect here.
I apologize, councilman Brackus, I'm going to cut you off.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was watching the clock.
Okay, well, I'm going to move on.
Okay, thank you.
Because I want to be respectful of everyone else getting an opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor TV. Would anybody else like to add something new or maybe touch on something that's already been said?
Just real quickly, there's, there's a number of places, and I'll get with you individually on them, where we're making changes to current policies, that, one of the big ones is, shadowing has always been a big element that we've looked at when we're, when we're discussing permitting and stuff, and that's been struck from the, from the, the height, the building height forms and our, our standards, and, and that's probably one of the biggest impacts on existing residences that you have.
Just to clarify, you said shadowing?
Shadowing and viewing, and on page nine, ED six, varied building heights, we've struck shadowing and views and put in scale and height, and the shadowing and view shed are basics, and I believe those basics are actually outlined in statute as well, so, it just, there's a number of places like that where we've made changes that I have concern about that the language is, is not addressing what we truly want to see there. So I'll get with them individually on those. I know we're not delving down into the word by word on this, so.
Perfect, thank you so much. Would anyone else like to add anything in at this point?
This is Naomi.
Okay.
Naomi, you're up, and then I'll go with Chuck Reno.
Okay, thanks. I think the comments so far have been good, I just kind of thought on page 11, this is on historic resources for the university district, there's a line that says support relocation of historic resources only in lieu of demolition, and I think that we should be more proactive, often my line by lines, but I'm just thinking now at the big picture level of following established principles of avoid, minimize, mitigate, that's avoid impacts to historic resources, minimize impacts, and then only mitigate impacts. And I think that kind of phraseology or wording should be included. I just wanted to point out an interesting thing on page 21, which is in the community neighborhood centers, there's this section at the top called outdoor gathering spaces, and I thought it was a really interesting idea of incorporating outdoor gathering spaces such as plazas, parka parks, squares, greens, and other public spaces in these neighborhood centers. And I don't know any neighborhood centers that have any kind of outdoor gathering spaces, so to me this is a brand new idea, and I think it's a pretty cool idea. Is the theory taking a step further, I guess asking our planning staff, how would we incorporate something like that? I mean, would this roll out in the code that we would require something like that?
Just to clarify, you're asking about the outdoor gathering spaces, how to incorporate those?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great idea, I just, I'm not aware of any right now, in any neighborhood centers, really.
Would any of the commissioners like to use a hint of that?
I can provide some clarification. Yeah, typically that would be planned as part of a larger neighborhood center development, and, and oftentimes it is something that would be required through your code to have those types of spaces built in when you're building a new center, you know, outdoor seating as part of, for restaurants, other types of things, so that is something that could be addressed at that level.
Well, I think it's an amazing idea, and I would love to see it even when there's renovation, not just building new. So let's say someone's renovating an existing shopping center, to really create what you're going after, maybe we would have separate codes that deal with renovation and creating these. I know that there's downward, in my ward, in Ward Two, the Summit Sierra, they've spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to make this mall feel like more of a place, and they keep talking about putting a plaza, or a park, or some kind of center gathering space, but I think it could be applicable to other places. I don't know of any, any that we have now, and I think it's a really neat idea.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's it for right now. I'll send you, you know, more detailed line-by-line recommendations.
All right, thank you, Chuck Reno.
Yeah, Commissioner Reno, for the record, this is a whole new way of looking at, at things, you know, the structure plan and, and the guiding principles, and I've been excited about it, I've been really excited about the, the community and neighborhood centers. I grew up in the, in the old Ward One there, area at Mayberry and Hunter Lake, and that, it's always kind of been a good community center, and I'm excited for it to kind of grow and to morph, and, and that live-work balance, I think, is, is great. I, I'd just like to endorse this plan, I think there's been a lot of discussion in the public, a lot of discussion on the planning commission, on, on these guiding design principles, and, and, and I think we've, we've done our due diligence to really hammer out the concerns, not only for the public, but from the planning commission.
All right, great comments. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Darcy, maybe you could address this for me, in community centers, we, you and I had a brief discussion earlier regarding parking, and what is being proposed in the plan, and some of the generic verbiage for pathways, streetways, and their vacationing of those. Could you address those for the record? I, I thought we had a good conversation earlier on that.
So I think your question about parking really related to kind of the, how will, as, as existing neighborhood centers, community centers transition over time, how is parking going to be treated? So, you know, the concepts in the plan really look at the identification of those areas. So ultimately, your surface parking is likely to transition to either tuck-under parking, you may ultimately have some structured parking where you have the densities to support that, but the recognition that your parking doesn't just go away as you're redeveloping some of these centers, you're going to need to have a more flexible approach, and you've already got that in your code in a number of places. Allow for flexibility in your parking requirements, you also, in some cases, allow for on-street parking credits, those types of things, but that that would need to be addressed in more detail through those particular, does that capture that one?
Okay, so, to expand on our discussion, what is being proposed as policy is a broader picture, a much larger picture of opening up for code ordinance, things like that, for, for physical design of a physical piece of property, whether it's in the, in the core of downtown Reno, midtown, or if it's a new outlying community that's being built up or being proposed, correct? Okay, so, it doesn't eliminate anything, it, it enhances for the future development.
The, the idea here is to be very clear about what the city wants to see in those locations, through the recommendations and the implementation strategies, we'll identify potential barriers you might have in your code to, that you need to look at, that really would be necessary to implement these concepts. So that will be a step that would kind of immediately follow the master plan, that would say, all right, now that we want to see those, what is the, you know, specific tool that we're going to use to implement them? So there will be a number of code modifications that will be needed to implement some of these concepts. Some of them you do have in place already, but it may be a case of, is this working the way we want it to? Is it, you know, so there might be some tweaks, in other cases, some new tools, those types of things that come out of the plan, but this is really just to kind of set the stage for those conversations and make it clear that's what you want.
Thank you.
As this discussion does come to an end, I wanted to make sure to open the floor for anybody who hasn't voiced any of their points of clarification, any concerns that they have on this section.
Um, this is Naomi, I have one more, one or two more questions or comments.
Perfect, go right ahead.
Okay, um, this is relating to the convention center part of the plan, and I just wondered, you know, the Pepper Mill and Atlantis are located close, but the Pepper Mill is not in the convention center, and I, whereas items that are further from the convention center, such as down by Meadowwood Mall, are. And I just wondered if, when you guys go back to finalize, is there any thought about including the Pepper Mill, which is one block north of Moana, versus just, you know, there's some proposed gaming areas around Meadowwood that haven't been built out yet? So it's just, it's just a question, whether that should be part of that or not? I think it's no further from the convention center than the areas you have to the south.
So this is Sienna Reed here. In terms of a larger discussion around moving the Pepper Mill into the convention center, we haven't specifically had those conversations. I think one of the things that's important to note is that, you know, what we still have is, is a system of centers and corridors that are multimodal in nature. We're trying in our downtown centers and our urban corridors to really achieve a mix of uses that promote activity over time, you know, quality pedestrian streetscapes, different options for transportation, and just general overall activity. And so, even though the Pepper Mill is still in an urban corridor, you know, the development feel over time in terms of what's being envisioned should still feel quite similar, and to, to step back and kind of think about the gaming uses a little bit more specifically, I think one thing that's really important to, to note in this updated master plan is, is we have specifically carried forward all of the locations where gaming is currently identified as either being allowed to continue forth if it's existing, or to be established new through the approval of a special use permit. So, wanted to make that, that very clear, that that's a, a clear carry forward from our existing master plan.
Right, I noticed it looks the same, and that was just my question, and you only have two centers downtown, you're probably redrawing some boundaries of what, where is downtown, and so I just at least wanted to ask the question. I mean, the Pepper Mill's fantastic, some of the areas around it, not as much, so if there was an opportunity to revitalize and make it part of the convention center, I might just, I thought that might be to the good. And the second thing I wanted to ask about, is you used a sentence throughout this plan called, that you added, called avoid vacating streets or right-of-way to maintain pedestrian and bike, bicycle connectivity? I didn't really just, I didn't know what that is, avoid vacating. What is vacating? Is that like abandoning?
Yes, that does refer to vacations of streets or right-of-ways, and the point there is really to just emphasize that there are a number of considerations when you look at that type of request, that you should be thinking about, that the when you look at that type of request, that you should be thinking about the impacts potentially to pedestrian and bike connections, as well as vehicular connections if you're in a location like downtown, other situations, as well as impacts to utility. So just really a policy to kind of flag that as a, you know, not something to take lightly. Those are important connections typically, and something that needs to be considered on a case-by-case basis.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are all done with our first segment.
Could I make just a couple more questions? I didn't get through everything before. I kind of echo Ms. Stewart's thoughts. We're calling it a convention center, but I've always wondered if Reno's going to get to the point where we wanted to find a true uptown. And I'm not sure it goes as far as the Pepper Mill, but maybe the Kitsky Lane, Meadowwood Mall area, leave that for that. I think in here, there needs to be some concept that just because developers can build the infrastructure, doesn't mean it's a consent to build. Sometimes, you know, the ability, capacity, and so on, does not necessarily mean that is a way to give up your timing abilities. And I think that the city needs to express that they're going to be in control of the timing of development. There's also, and on page 22, I'll note, a lot of comments of, quote, "where feasible." And that will be used quite a bit by the Planning Commission when they're doing, you know, considering requests. And I think that should be changed to "unless otherwise justified." So the burden is on an applicant when they're coming forward to you to do this unless otherwise justified, not a loose or where feasible. I think that's stronger and better language. And there's a policy relay in the downtown plan, related to the university and abandonments that I think I'm not comfortable with, that's UD eight. And my final statement, I think it's a way to get them to be able to demolish some of those historic buildings there. And I just want to express what I stated before is this airport provision up there in the stead, that's an introduction, I think that is a very monumental shift in putting a lot of land use density up there. That is probably going to create some conflicts. I think the council needs to think very carefully if we're going to accept that. To me, it's just not central to the freeway, and I don't know if we're not going to be creating more land use conflict with the existing built-out stead residential area. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will go ahead and turn it back over to Sienna Reed.
So at this point, if we don't have any other comments on the design principles, what we would do would be to transition into our draft citywide policies.
All right, I'm actually going to send it to Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilwoman Breckus has mentioned the stead airport several times, and I'd just like, and Bill's probably the best person to answer this question, how long ago was the master plan for the stead airport approved?
It was at least six years or more.
Okay, and then maybe the legal, what would be our recourse to roll back that plan now that we, that the council has given approval to the airport authority to develop that area? What recourse would the council have to do that?
Roll back the previous one.
To roll back their plan, which is, we, they created a plan for development there, and the city of Reno accepted that. We don't have land use control over what they do within that property boundary. We approved that master plan, we don't, we can't, I mean, we can control the area outside of there, but inside there, that land use is theirs, isn't it, once we approve that, the council approved that plan? And what would be our, the process to roll that back? Because that's what Councilwoman Breckus is insinuating, is we need to roll back the plan that was granted to the stead airport six years ago, eight years ago, whenever it was.
So we do have zoning authority over that property. It is airport land that was given to them or purchased by the Federal Aviation Administration, so it's a little more complex. But I would suggest that there's a more important question, which is, areas around airport are very limited in terms of what you can do with them. So to me, it would be more a question, do you maximize that property, which ultimately will be infill in the sense of development around it, to a use that would produce jobs and income, or do you keep it vacant? Because you're not practically going to be putting people in homes, you know, in that proximity to an airport. So if you look at any airport across the country, generally, it's industrial or employment around the airport. So it's really a question, I think, to the council of whether or not that land should be used, or if there's a demand for that type of land, should we grow out further to accommodate it?
And there's very limited land around it that we have control over. We've got about-
Mostly BLM to the north.
About 300 acres in the, that's up against Swan Lake there, and then the rest of it's BLM, we don't have control of that. But I'm just trying to get to the point that Councilwoman Breckus keeps talking about, we need to control what happens on that airport, and we've lost control of that because it was master planned. All we can control is their ingress and egress to the airport. Their ability to build in there was already approved.
For a point of order, I do have public comment prior to-
Hold on, one second. I'm just going to ask any more council or commissioners that have not had an opportunity to speak, this would be a great timer or a question, because I know there's a few of you that haven't. So if any of you would like to, I think that there are none. Madam Clerk, public comment.
Madam Mayor, our first public comment is from Dave Ingers, David Ingersoll, excuse me, followed by Tammy Holt Still.
Good after, okay, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members, and the Planning Commission. My name is David Ingersoll, and I'm here to talk about the updated master plan. And I think, and I could be wrong, and please correct me if I am, that there's a guiding principle to have infill development. So I wonder why and how the Planning Commission and the consultants are recommending, or possibly recommending, allowing residential, single-family residences to the west of Del Webb Parkway West, a foothill neighborhood. There's also, as was discussed, hazard mitigation concerns. And as the prior commentator said, there are all the costs that are to consideration regarding further development outside of the city of Reno. And as always, water availability is an issue, even though last year, and with the people who are here who were flooded, it was the other side of the water issue. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Tammy Holt Still, followed by Frank.
Okay, a few more questions that I have regarding what I had heard today. First of all, policies you were talking about. We know for a fact on Military Road, when I was here with the Planning Commission, we were talking about different things regarding Lemon Drive and Military Road and the warehouses there. One of the policies was you should be thinking about, as a planning commission, as a master plan, when you are putting industrial places right next to homes, that there be the proper noise mitigation, not an eight-foot wall, because semis are larger, are taller than eight foot. It should, and also the fact of you're putting it on a, what you would call an expressway, you put a barrier wall on one side, but you didn't put a barrier wall on the other side, so the noise is bouncing off one and going right back into the residence. There's a lot to this that you guys are not looking at and not doing as you should. Number two, let's see, you had neighborhoods versus country living. You need to remember, you're trying to encroach on people who have been in their neck of the woods for a long time. The homes out in Lemon Valley that have been flooded due to Swan Lake and the building from the stead area and Golden Valley were out in the country. Number three, you need to feather it. You don't put a warehouse right on top of other people, you feather it. You know, if you want to put a warehouse next to apartments, okay, I could see that. That was smart thinking. But putting a warehouse right across from homes that are acre in size, right there on Lemon Drive, and then not giving those people the protection because their county, not city, is not good. Let's see, the airport, building on and making that airport into something that's going to create more sewage, affluent waters into what area? Where are you going to put the water? You guys are only allowed 2 million gallons per day. I know that when you get done building out the stead area, it's going to be up to 7 million gallons per day. Where are you going to put the water? You don't have any place for it. It's obvious as it is right now. There's things that need to be done before you even think about taking another step. Zoning, that has to do with, again, we're agricultural, and you're wanting to put general and high density in an agricultural area. We didn't ask for it, we don't want it. You got to look at everything, not just what suits you guys. And number three, the last time I was here, I asked how to get on, in fact, I did an email to you, Mr. Johnson, how to get on so that I can voice our concerns regarding your master plan for the city of Reno, since we're right on your border. And I never got a reply back, so I didn't get to say anything. So that's why I'm here now, and I have a lot of other residents that feel the same way I do. And then empty property over by stead airport. Why do you got to do anything at all? Make it into a park. We don't have enough open space as it is. There's manufactured homes on acres over there that are flooded, that they don't have any place for their kids to go play. Make it into a park. Be better than anything else. I think that's pretty much, why do it at all? So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Frank Schenk.
Yep.
Followed by Sam Denae.
Yep, Frank Schenk, yep. And Mr. Bob Zian, thank you for being at the Justin Hope. I think that was great running for them, I appreciate that. Anyway, I live in the Cold Springs area, I'm in the county, and I lived out there a long time. And you know what, one thing I was reading in master plan, I didn't see anything for the wildlife out there. The deer, and they're still getting hit left and right and along the Peterson Mountain Range. And I'd just like to see N-Dow more involved with the master plan. There's some very environmentally sensitive areas. I pushed for years trying to get maybe some more advanced signs that would give warning to people driving along 395, and also like tunnels, which I know is very expensive. But I know with all the development moving out there in Heinz Ranch and Evans Ranch, and, you know, it's going to be even more impacted. Another subject is I just, I really want to see, you know, no cost to existing residents. Like, I really believe in the planning, that residents shouldn't have, with the tax increase, which I supported for the schools, I think that could have been ignored, but because the planning was not done very well for the schools, you know, it shouldn't have really happened. But I just want, I hope that this new board will do some good planning and will not put costs on existing residents, on schools. I mean, I have a kid who has autism, and they're just really overcrowded, and it's really hard to get good staffing in there, and I really feel bad for them. And I just feel that, you know, if all the growth coming in, then I think that it should be paid by developers and not passed on to existing residents. Anyway, I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sam Denae.
Sam D-N-A Denae, the heart and soul and body and mind of the Reno government, and I'll try to be very brief. I'm going to spend less time self-aggrandizing and more time castigating. At any rate, we spent, what we have for the folks out in TV land and on my YouTube channel, they're going to update the notorious ubiquitous never-ending Reno master plan. And they've been talking about it for about an hour now, and these folks have done a wonderful job presenting all the important, some of the important issues. But something that has been left out, leave it up to Sam to bring it onto the table a little bit, is schools, schools. Recently, the citizens, supposedly, and I don't really believe that was the right vote count, the citizens voted for a never-ending, a never-ending tax increase, never-ending, infinite tax increase on the citizens for schools. And the very first thing they did with their scheme is to just basically end Hug High School and start a whole new high school, devastating a golf course and moving, moving, there's so many other things they could have done with that high school right where it is. Instead, some developers, or who knows, involved behind it all, and they want to build the Hug High School over there where the Wild Creek Golf Course is, in the middle of, I don't know, 5,000 citizens. Five or four or five years of jackhammering and building the school at this new place, and then the citizen having the school around there, the local citizens having the school around all those years. Anyway, I didn't want to dwell on it, it just was the concept of what is going on with the school situation, all these different schools that are going to be built? And why aren't we talking about the real culprit, the real culprit, if that's the right word, in this whole expansion master plan issue? And it's the folks on the other side of the hills to the east of here, Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex, not in their head. The real culprits, and thanks, I asked Colonel Kazmierski, the head of EDON, I'm partially responsible for the mess over there because I, according to Colonel Kazmierski, helped, was a driving force that is bringing, that brought Tesla to Reno, which is expanding all of these other problems that nobody had thought about, including myself. I did not realize that Tesla was going to have to be paid for subsidized by citizens' taxes, hundreds of millions of dollars. Now, they're building a freeway over there, a $200 million freeway, free freeway for Don Roger Norman and Lance Gilman, so that there can be a road down to the airport down in Silver Springs. Now, why are we even talking about expanding stead airport when we got Silver Springs and everybody conflicting with everything else? At any rate, and where nobody has talked about the most important thing, we've got to do something about the Reno media wacko freaks, especially the Reno Gazette. The Reno Gazette has proven over and over again that it does not like Reno. It certainly does not like law enforcement, it doesn't even like the fire department. We've got to do, find some way not in their head, some way not in their head, smiling, some way to dismantle the Reno Gazette. Put it on the agenda someday, and give me about six hours to talk about it.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, and thank you over there. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Thank you. Madam Mayor, our last public comment, Cynthia Ryan did not wish to speak, however, she is in opposition of the item, and with that, we have no further public comment on B1.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Okay, with that being said-
Whoops, I guess we have one more.
We have one more? Okay.
Danny Kleus would like to speak on this item.
All right, great.
And if I can note anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on each item, you will need to submit a separate form. Thank you.
Danny Kleus again. Why do you guys have to keep on building Reno master plan? Ought to be more about our roads, more about our police force, more about our schools. There is way too many people here right now. It takes over an hour to go from Lemon Valley to McCarran Boulevard. Why? Too many people. You guys want to keep on building out there without doing anything else? Now, there is a plan five years down the road. How many buildings are going to go up? How many subdivisions are going to go up before that road gets obsolete again? That road's going to be obsolete before it's built. Why is that? Why can't anybody figure it out? You guys are all going backwards. Then you want to make my airport bigger, commercialized? I lived out there, we deal with the Reno Air Race. It's great, they fly right over us, once a year. We don't want commercial planes going in and out of that place. We were there first, not to commercialize that place. We listen to planes all day, it doesn't bug us. You bringing a jet in there, it's going to bug us. Why? Why can't you guys just go forward instead of backwards? You want to build, build, build. Well, maybe the warehouses that are already out there should be paying for our highways. Maybe they should be paying for our roads. You know, Military Road, it's a two-lane road. There's a bunch of warehouses out there. The trucks, there's no stoplights. Trucks take forever. Then again, Lemon Valley Drive's closed, twice as much traffic on there. You imagine when all the subdivisions and more warehouses get put in there? People aren't using stead boulevard that often. What are you guys going to do? What about the police force? Who's going to police all this? You guys are going backwards. I can't believe it. And then, the schools. Everybody complains about the schools, they're overcrowded. I went to stead elementary, I watched O'Brien being built. You guys got to figure out that before you build subdivisions anymore. You guys build subdivisions, oh, we need a new school. Well, you didn't think about the other subdivisions that are coming in. Why wasn't that school built big and- Why wasn't that school built big enough in the first place so we don't have a school every other mile? It's crazy. We don't need these warehouses instead. We don't need more subdivisions there. It's already crowded. Get our highways, get the police force, get our schools done, then think about it. Why is it always backwards? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, um, I'm gonna move on with the agenda, and I'm gonna ask council for a motion. So, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to comment first on staff that has really done a tremendous job with this. I know you guys, how many, how many meetings have you held?
I, I think at this point, it's, it's too many to count, but we've been very, very grateful to the community that they continue to help us with this plan.
It's been a lot. The few that I went to, um, were almost standing room only, there was a lot of participation. So, I know you guys took it very seriously incorporating, um, what the community's input was. And that's represented, um, in this, in this draft here before us today. So, kudos to everybody that's worked really, really hard on this. Um, with that, I would move forward, uh, make a motion to move forward with the Planning Commission approved draft of the design principles with identified modifications to serve as a foundation for preparation of implementation strategies and overall draft plan.
I have a motion and a second.
Can we have a little discussion? I just, um...
Yes, you get three minutes.
Thank you. I, um, you know, I haven't looked at the Tahoe-Sted Airport plan in a long, in a while, but I do find that language, that airport surrounding, surrounding, areas surrounding airports are appropriate for employment and generally intensification. It gets away from a concept that land around the airports should be held in reserve to avoid land use, uh, conflicts. And when you put land in reserve, that means you're holding it in some semi-rural landscape, like, uh, one unit to the 40 or one to the 20, which it may be zoned right now. And that's contrary to what I think Mr. McKenzie's and Mr. Thomas's dialogue was. So, any zoning change in this area that might come forward, the Master Plan is always gonna guide us towards an intensification in that area. And I'm just, I do have concern about additional land use conflict up in the North Valleys. I think it's very helter-skelter up there. So, I'll just, that's just a discussion point, that's just a concern. But I'm trying to, I've used Master Plan policy a bit, like, a fair amount, when land use and zonings come before you, especially permits. And this is how I see that part of this. And I'm concerned, um, that we're setting ourselves up for more land use conflict. Thank you.
I have a question before we vote.
Councilmember McKenzie, and then I will go to you, uh, Councilwoman Doer, okay?
Great.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. And if I'm not mistaken, the majority of that surrounding area was changed from, uh, public facility to industrial recently, within the last few years by this council, uh, the surrounding round, ground around, uh, Sted Airport. But I have a concern about the way that the motion is, is worded because several council members have brought up issues that they have with the language, the line-by-line language that we're using. And the motion would say that we're gonna move forward with this draft unless we space out the recommendations that, of change. And, uh, there was a recommendation by staff that we go to the line-by-line and, and go to them with those change, those issues, um, rather than doing it here. And if we're gonna have the recommendations, then we need to go back and go through this line-by-line and find the stuff that we think we need to have issue with, uh, before we pass the motion because we've gotta identify those modifications for the record today. So, uh, I have an issue with the way the motion's worded and, and would be opposed to the motion in that form.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Councilwoman Doer, give me one minute, please. Um, go ahead, Councilman Bobzien.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just to kinda clarify that because I think, um, we have a misunderstanding of, of what the motion means. Um, my understanding of identified modifications are the red line adjustments that I'm seeing in the draft language. But the, um, language that refers to this as a foundation for preparation of implementation strategies and overall draft plan, I think still provides some opportunity for those deeper dive modifications that need to be worked through. It, it, it's not a perfect process, but I think that it is the one that will get us down the road.
Good points. All right, good points. Uh, Councilwoman Doer.
Thank you so much. And similarly, um, I was concerned about, um, having an opportunity to work with staff. And I wanted to give an example where staff were very helpful, and met with them before this meeting. And I had identified, uh, a question about trees, for example, where it said we're gonna preserve trees, but it didn't actually talk about, you know, a focus on increasing the trees in concert with, uh, really Reno or what we heard from the Urban Land Institute. So, they're still planning, to my understanding, to go back, they agreed with me, to go back and modify that language. And I wanted to make sure that both changes that they've already have in the works or changes that they've heard today or changes we might send to them in the future would be acceptable. I just wanted to make sure we all understood the process and what we need to do to get that stuff into the draft. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Um, my under... Go ahead, Phil Thomas.
So, just, I think this conversation is very important. This really is about, you know, narrowing down or skinning the issues. So, there's a lot of information that's before you. Um, I don't think it was the staff's intent that this would be the end of the road in terms of comment and changes, but to narrow it down to those issues that are gonna have to be addressed before the final plan. So, certainly from our standpoint, if the council members feel like they still wanna go line-by-line and Matt's suggestions, the staff would anticipate hearing those ultimately for a conversation at council if there's a disagreement between what we hear today and what those red line comments are. So, this is not an end, this is a process of narrowing down the conversation point. So, I don't think it's adverse to the feeling of council to not cut themselves out of opportunity for change to be able to keep moving this forward.
Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I concur with Mr. Bobzien's statements and understanding the motion and those echoed by Mr. Thomas. But I will say, you know, we're all our own bosses, how we operate is all up to us. But I, um, because I think we're at a point where transparency is important and justification's important. So, uh, as I prepare comments, I'll be providing those in written form to help build a record, to see where, you know, whether they make it into the draft or not make it into the draft, at least there's a record of where, uh, what I'm suggesting. And so, um, I think that's a very fair way to go. And I will, just a little bit of history, is my understanding that the Reno Master Plan adopted in 1997, um, was adopted by the Planning Commission '93, and it got hung up for four years in adoption of the Master Plan by the council for four years. I think Mr. Thomas remembers maybe that long tenure. It was always in the adoption dates, and, and I, I just do not wanna see that happen. We've all put too much work to bog down on stuff.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you very much. I think that offered, um, some clarification to the motion. Um, my understanding was the same as Mr. Bobzien represented as well. And I do think we will all present our, um, recommendations for modifications, and then the council can deliberate on whether or not we, as a majority body, agree with those modifications. So, my motion stands.
All right, thank you very much. So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. At this time, uh, Vice Chair Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I call for a motion, is there any comments from any of the planning commissioners based on anything we've heard today? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nowitzki.
Thank you. I move, make a motion to move forward with the Planning Commission approved draft of the design principles with identified modifications to serve as a foundation for preparation of implementation strategies and overall draft plan.
Thank you, Mr. Nowitzki, I have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Hawkins, second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Darcy White. And you can kick off, uh, this next item.
Great, so, thank you. We're gonna step back a little bit into, uh, the citywide policies next. Um, and just a reminder, we're gonna break this into two sections. So, there's eight guiding principles, we're gonna cover four, we'll pause for discussion, and then we'll come back. So, I'm gonna give you just a little bit of context, and then Matt's gonna dive in on the first four. Um, but, so, it's just about a year ago, we brought the draft guiding principles and goals to this group, um, based on the results of the Phase One visioning work. So, uh, the plan foundations, um, are based on these eight guiding principles. And these are really the big picture concepts that reflect the vision we heard from the community. So, rather than having a, a long drawn-out vision statement, um, as some plans do, this is really an alternative to kind of pull out those key ideas and then make sure we've got the right goals and policies to support the concepts in each area. Um, so, as a quick reminder, um, the key concepts that came out of that phase visioning, uh, Phase One visioning work, um, participants were asked to respond to kind of what the priority areas were for their vision, the top three areas. Um, number one, base for outdoor activities, um, that was ranked absolutely the highest. Um, also, an arts and culture center and a university town and technology center. So, those are concepts you'll see reflected in the draft plan, um, as well as the community values that were reflected, uh, in that Phase One work. And we continue to see in our public, uh, comments, uh, through the process. So, in terms of how we got to this point, um, we talked early on, this is another place where we've tried to streamline the Master Plan, simplify it, make it more user-friendly and more relatable in terms of how it, how it really helps implement the community's vision. So, um, those of you who are really, uh, familiar with the existing Master Plan, you know you have a series of kind of plans within the plan. You've got a separate section planned for land use, uh, for population, open space, and so on. And so, what we've done is taken, uh, the existing policies in each of those existing plans, um, reorganized them under the guiding principles. And then we've gone through a process of evaluating those with, uh, staff, with Planning Commission, um, and adding new policies to really support, uh, the policy direction that we've heard, uh, from the community. So, this has been a pretty extensive process that we've gone through to kind of vet those existing policies, refine them if needed. In some cases, they're no longer valid, um, and then incorporate those new ones. So, a lot of, uh, discussion that's gone into that, uh, to date, um, that got us to this point. So, in terms of, of kind of notable changes, we've tried to strengthen things in, in several areas, some of the growth management policies, um, looking at historic preservation, housing, um, all of those things are really more prominent in the plan. Um, and we've also tried to, uh, formalize some of the, uh, there's a lot of just narrative language in some of the open space and greenways plan, the conservation plan, that if you weren't really dialed into the details of that plan, you might miss it as really a policy of the city. So, we've really tried to pull those things out and formalize what those policies are so that it's very clear that that's what the city's intent is. Um, it's also important to recognize there are a number of new policy areas that the Master Plan addresses that, um, you know, really weren't typically addressed back in '96, '97, when the, the last major plan update, uh, was developed. And, um, some of those, uh, economic policies, Matt'll talk a little bit about that. Um, we've, we've talked about the importance of the city having its own economic kind of vision to complement the regional work. Uh, we do have a new food policy section. Hazard mitigation and resiliency was addressed in your current plan, but that's a more prominent, uh, set of policies now. Health and wellness is a big theme. So, a lot of different things, um, as well as sustainability, uh, which is really kind of woven throughout, uh, the policies. And we heard a lot of interest and support for those types of policies coming out of our public meetings. So, um, one other thing I'll mention before we get into kind of the specifics, um, in terms of the goals, um, a lot of people have talked about, you know, uh, where do we have a home for these different policies within the plan? Um, and how do we kind of make sure that they're prominently addressed? Um, you know, the particular interests that we hear, and, and there are a lot of different perspectives on that. Um, the current Master Plan, really the policy plan, had about six goals. And I think we've gone to, not sure what our total count is, but we've tried to really, where we have a set of policies on a particular issue, have a cleared goal defined in terms of where we wanna go in that particular area, so that we've got a foundation for that. So, that's a big shift in this plan, to really try to be more specific about what you're looking for, what you're hoping to accomplish, um, and then ultimately getting into, within the policies, what the city's role is in that. In some cases, it's a leadership role, in other cases, it's a partnership role. And so, there, those are all kind of the nuances that we've been trying to focus on and, and continue to work on. So, in terms of citywide policy review, um, we've been working through this, this particular section of the plan really since last fall with staff. Um, we started full review of that with them in December. Um, and I think it's really important to emphasize that, um, through this process, we have been, uh, been working closely with, um, all of the different departments within the city. And Sienna has been instrumental in really orchestrating that. Um, every time we've been here, we've been sitting down with Public Works, we've met with parks, police, fire, um, all of those different interests. Because ultimately, this isn't just a plan for community development, it's a plan for the city. And so, how all of those groups work together is really crucial in terms of how the policies and the plan are implemented. So, that's something I really wanted to emphasize. Um, we did do, uh, another round of public input, uh, opportunities just a month ago. Um, in April, we had about 200 people participate, um, in that round of input. Uh, we did a number of, of topic-based, uh, kind of focus groups, and those were all very well-attended. Everything from historic preservation to climate change, uh, food policy, uh, a lot of different perspectives that we heard. So, that was very helpful for us. And those, uh, the feedback from that, we'll talk about as we go through each of the areas, kind of what we heard through those conversations. But we've definitely made, um, every effort to reflect, uh, kind of back to you what we've heard through those discussions. And Planning Commission had a workshop very recently, on May 8th, uh, on this, uh, particular subject. So, they've been helpful as well in terms of having to get through a lot of material on a very short timeframe, so we really appreciate that. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt.
Good afternoon, Council Planning Commission, excited to be here again. I'm Matt Prosser with Economic and Planning Systems, supporting Clearing Associates on the, the plan development. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk you through the first four guiding principles. And what I'm gonna do is touch on, first, just briefly show you the goals, you've seen these several times. Um, and just to reiterate that all of the policies that we've developed, um, throughout the process are organized underneath these goals as, trying to reinforce them. And then we're gonna talk about what we've heard from the community. Um, and then after I'm gone through those four, we'll have a chance for comment, um, discussion before we move on to, uh, five through eight. So, the first guiding principle, uh, resilient local and regional economy. Um, this is a, a new element to your Master Plan. Um, having economic-related policies is something that wasn't in your previous Master Plan. And it's actually something a lot of cities are doing nationally, um, trying to take a more proactive stance in terms of how to spur economic development. And so, what did we do? What are the policies that we put into the plan to promote, uh, a resilient economy? And so, first, what we've, we felt was needed was providing a platform for local decision-making. Um, you have a great partnership with EDON and other partners to do economic development, um, for the region. But, um, there are opportunities for you to supplement their efforts and, and build onto their efforts to focus more on specific industries or efforts that are key to Reno and not necessarily a main focus of EDON. And so, what we've done is provided policies to provide that platform, um, as well as encouraging, um, and fostering, uh, further, um, partnerships and relationships in terms of economic development. We've seen with the restructure, at least our perspective, the restructure of the economic development efforts, um, has really created more clarity for the business environment and is, is working well. And we think there's opportunity for the city to supplement in certain areas, um, what is already going on. Uh, another key element of the policies is this idea of creating and protecting employment areas. And this is a focus of something that I work on on all plans I've been doing, and, and sort of a new thing. It's this understanding that the city has a major say in the physical places where economic activities occur. So, your traditional economic development activities focus more often on what occurs in a building, the activities, the types of jobs. And there really needs a lot of attention on the physical places where employment, uh, is located. And understanding that if we don't have quality employment location, or areas that are attractive to the various industries we wanna attract, we're not gonna be able to be successful in attracting those industries. And so, we've built the framework, um, within the framework plan, of trying to differentiate the employment areas. So, we have, you know, the regional centers, which are those true mixed-use environments, attractive to sort of those office technology workers. You have the innovation areas around the universities where we're trying to spur economic development out of their research activities. And then we have these, um, industrial employment areas, which are, are, are different in the way they, they operate in there, you know, larger floorplant, format buildings, they rely more on transportation connectivity as opposed to, you know, more compact development for their operations. Um, and then lastly, I, I think a key element that a lot of communities are looking at is also the importance of quality life on economic development. And it really goes hand in hand. If we can create a quality, uh, environment for people to live, it's also gonna be a quality environment for people to work as well. And so, key components that are of importance to the community are the outdoor recreation, urban revitalization, and arts and culture. And understanding that if we invest in these things and promote these things, it's going to create returns economically for our community. So, what have we heard from the community in our outreach in terms of the policies? And what changes have we made related to that? There's a desire to attract technology jobs in company headquarters. So, we've put a lot of policies related, trying to create environments and target industries that are within this. There is some concern that the recent growth in employment has mainly been in sort of these warehousing jobs, which pay better wages than the tourism economy that you have now, but are still not those higher-paying jobs that the community would like to see. And so, that's also another focus that we have. Understanding the importance of arts and culture, we've gone in and added several spots within this guiding principles related to arts and culture to reflect back the feedback we got from that community in Reno that they are very important, and we agree with that. And we wanted to make sure that was adequately presented within the guiding principle. We also had, we found an issue related to college town versus university town. There was some feedback given by the community college that the word "university town" is somewhat excludes the other higher educational activities that occur. And so, we've been more attuned to the verbiage we use related to college town or university town to make sure that we're being more inclusive. And in areas where we're talking about UNR and university, we're using the word "university." But when we're thinking more globally, we're talking more college town. And that might actually evolve. We were kicking around in terms, we were thinking education-based economy. That might be a term we move towards so we can avoid this sort of conflict and be more inclusive. And then, again, this, everybody talking about how important quality of life is to economic success and making sure that we have those housing, education, access to outdoors components within these policies, which we've tried to put in. So, the second growth policy, responsible and well-managed growth. A lot of this relates back to those key policy decisions we made back in December. And so, the goals are really a reflection of a lot of those discussions and what we've heard from the community. And so, what are the policies that will help us achieve this guiding principle and the goals underneath it? I think first is understanding what our priorities are. That's the second goal that I want to talk about first. We've created a hierarchy in the policies of where the city should really, based on the feedback we've gotten from the community and you all, where the city should focus its resources, its investments, its energy. And that's first, it's in your centers, and then your corridors and your infill and redevelopment areas. And from there, we've heard that the employment areas are really a key focus. And so, those are sort of the second tier. And then, the third is, well, let's make sure we're focusing on the places already in our city and investing in those before we consider other areas. So, that's this priority of how we guide investment in several ways in what the city does. This is helping provide clarity for you all in terms of your work going forward. But we also understand that it's not possible, both from a market's perspective and a capacity development, to capture all development in infill and redevelopment conditions. And so, there is going to have to be, and there's likely going to be, greenfield development on the edges of our city, both within our sitting boundary and potentially in some annexation areas. And so, what we've done is, we've created a fair amount of policies related to growth on the edge of the community. And what are the major considerations the city considers in terms of fiscal and environmental and social sort of aspects to ensure that growth on our edges isn't adversely impacting us? And so, we've, as you've seen in these policies, as you review them, you'll see that there are threshold comments. There are several things related to all the services and infrastructure that the city provides, helping to provide more guidance and more clarity in when it's acceptable for new growth on the edge. And part of that is also looking at the sphere of influence and recognizing we have a fair, a large amount of land in our sphere, and what can we do to help prioritize that area and set up some more regional conversations with our partners at the county and perhaps at other municipalities to talk about growth issues in areas that are sort of in that transition kind of area. And then, lastly, incorporating sustainable development practices. That's something that we heard from the community a lot. And so, is a big addition to that guiding principle. So, what else have we heard? We've heard that infill and redevelopment are a major priority. And so, we've built that prioritization within to the policies to reflect that. There is some concern that urban growth on the urban edge is creating sprawl. And so, again, I talk to all those policies that look at how do we manage growth in a more fiscally and economically, environmentally, and socially beneficial way for the community. I mentioned the sustainable development practices, and then, there's strong interest in how we, there's a lot of places where we say incentivize or we want to encourage things, and people are really wanting, well, how are we going to do that? The sort of nuts and bolts of that. And so, that's coming in the implementation plan. And so, look for that in our next phase. We're really going to start to lay out some opportunities and ideas for how you can try to encourage the type of development that you want. The third guiding principle is a thriving downtown university district. And you've done a lot of work on your downtown action plan. And so, what we've done is really reflected a lot of the work that Puma has done on that plan within to the master plan. And so, working off of the core values that they identified, we, you know, the primary aspects that we developed were these sort of physical design principles at the downtown district level that really reflect what came out of that downtown plan. And so, it's making sure that we're making those connections strong because of that effort that you've already done. And so, a lot of people saw that in their feedback to us, but they thought that transit and connectivity needed to be enhanced in terms of how the citywide and the downtown plans work together. And so, we've added some language to strengthen that. There was some confusion. There's an innovation district area that was sort of proposed in the downtown plan. It was called an industrial innovation area, and people found that industrial term confusing. And so, we've sort of modified that to just be innovation to provide more clarity. As you're probably aware, affordable housing and homelessness are key concerns. And we've built in policies, both in Guiding Principle III and elsewhere within the plan to refer to these things, but this continually be a major focus of the community and something that we think is a major focus of the plan. And so, the last thing within this guiding principle was, within the downtown plan, there is these different districts. And some people wanted more clarity on how they are different and how different things like parking are addressed in those districts. So, we added some clarity related to that. And we've already heard some comments in the last couple of days where we need to build on that a bit more, but helping to understand how these districts will help differentiate each other within downtown. And then, the last guiding principle I'm going to go over before discussion is vibrant neighborhoods and centers. And so, this is really the opportunity, or this is the place, the goal, the goals where the ideas of housing diversity, affordability, that those big topic key issues we talked about for months over the last year with our demand study. This is a lot of where those policies live. This is the meat of that. So, within that, the first major chunk of that is housing diversity and affordability. And so, highlighting the need that we need to continually monitor our land supply to make sure we're getting the desired diversity that we want. Pointing out that we have a policy that there is affordable and workforce housing strategy that the city needs to maintain, and that we're carrying that forward, and that needs to be, that'll be a key implementation action. You'll see next week is, or next month, sorry, or July, yeah. So, almost next month, sorry. That'll be a key implementation action, is the framework for that of short-term affordable workforce housing strategy that's called for in these policies, which is a key focus of you all, I know. And then, other things related to incenting and retaining the type of housing, specifically affordable housing. Another major group of policies are new neighborhoods and options within those. So, the idea that we now, we want to require larger developments to provide a broader mix of housing within them as opposed to just the singular type of single-family home, recognizing that our demand for future housing is diverse, and we need to make sure that large projects that are going to have major impacts on the city's form incorporate this mix. And then, lastly, understanding, we've heard this a lot from the community, is we have a lot of great neighborhoods. We need to continually prioritize reinvestment in those and not lose sight of the need to make those a priority as the city grows. So, there are policies related to that. A couple more. This is a huge thing we heard, is walkability and bikeability. And so, we've built in a ton of policies related to creating walkable and bikeable places. And one of those big additions we've already talked about was this idea of a community or neighborhood center. And that's had tons of support, and people really like that idea. And so, we've tried to reinforce that as much as we can and provide guidance, both in the design guidelines, but also in the citywide policies, to encourage this concept of walkable community and neighborhood centers and providing flexibility and variety for what that can look like, both in a new and redevelopment sort of context. So, what have we heard? Again, walkability, that's been the big thing. Again, affordable and workforce housing, there's a lot of interest around that, and they want more clarity. The community is asking for more clarity. And so, what the policies do is they set up sort of, this is what the city's going to do in terms of the types of plans or programs they're going to create. And then, within the implementation strategy, we're going to provide the framework of what goes into that strategy. And so, look forward for that in July. And then, again, more, a stronger stance in affordable housing is what we've heard. And so, you'll see in the implementation actions, some ideas related to that. There's also continued support for expanding housing options. ADUs, smaller format homes are really something that have come up a lot. And so, how do we make sure that there's flexibility and availability for those types of housing developments? We also heard support for growing food and agriculture in neighborhoods. And so, we've incorporated policies and really sort of reiterated that the city's doing a lot in terms of allowing for food growth and that sort of thing already, and just making sure the master plan reflects what the city's already doing. All right, with that, I apologize for the large amount of information, but I'd love to hear your discussion on these four policies. So, I'll turn it over to Hade.
And we're back.
All right.
All right, so, once again, we're just continuing to build off of what's been in the works for quite a long time now. This discussion will be based on Guiding Principles one through four. A lot of these things are related or connected in some way, but just try to keep our questions, comments, and concerns more tailored towards these specific guiding principles as we move forward. Just touching briefly on a concern from the previous discussion round. This is foundational, it's not final. So, anything that you want to get out in the open here, that's what this is for. So, you can go ahead and kick off with whoever would like to begin.
All right, and I'm going to ask that everyone stay with three minutes, and then, after you have spoken, then we can come back around. And then, you get one minute in the spirit of time, because I want to keep everyone moving along. So, at this time, any council members or commissioners would like to ask some questions? Go ahead, Mr. Chacarino.
Guiding, let's see, goal number 3.3. There was a discussion previously about the historic preservation. I just wanted to maybe touch upon that and that new added line that we didn't see as a planning commission. Although, you know, it's 3.3E. It says, "For structures listed on the city's register of historic places, support relocation in lieu of demolition when reuse is not deemed feasible." And maybe I can get a little bit more discussion on that item. I know that people have private property rights, and so, maybe this will help to, maybe a little explanation, that would be great.
Absolutely. So, one of the things that we heard during our historic preservation topic-specific group was, you know, an understanding that development does change over time. We certainly have a variety of properties that are listed on our local register of historic places. Some of those are in more urban locations. And so, as development does come forward, can we consider from a policy perspective, kind of a, you know, if, you know, adaptive reuse of that structure isn't something that's deemed feasible, stating that the city would like to see those listed properties relocated? And just to clarify, we don't have a lot of listed properties at this point. Generally, the policies seek to add more over time, but at this point, I think we're at about 14. So, in relation to that language, that was really directly based on community feedback, and we've tried to make it, you know, very tailored to those properties that are on our local register.
And Commissioner Reno, I'll just kind of respond there. We had, just recently, on the planning commission, the Chisholm House came, and that was a reuse of that property, which I thought was excellent, and it helped to keep that as a viable property. Now, even being on the register, it doesn't mean that they don't have the right to demolish it and to move on and to do other things within that zoning area. So, I think, I like this language because it makes it, it gives some clarity there.
Thank you. Do any of the other council persons have questions?
I recognized. So, in the economic development one, and this is one very much, particularly in the last year operationally, been hoping we could get on as soon as possible. I think there needs to be more emphasis on nurturing our existing businesses and the physical business districts in which they reside. I think that's very important. I think any discussion about incentives for businesses and economic development needs to be tempered with concern about erosion of local tax revenues. I think those two go hand-in-hand. I think that there needs to be more emphasis that the quality of life that one enjoys in a community and in our community is, in fact, a greater contributor to economic development. I think it's in there, but I think that that could be boosted a little bit more. When it talks about barriers to entry, I appreciate that discussion, but I would like to see a little commentary that licensing can be a barrier to entry. I think it would provide us some guidance as we decide how to expand those businesses, which we decide to decide to license within our licensing framework, making new privileged licenses, et cetera. So, those are my five comments on that area. And the responsible and well-managed growth, which is really the oomph, you know, the heavy component of interest to me is, I would like going into the regional plan, some discussion and consideration that there might be consideration of rolling out the TMSA. I've found in particularly my work at Tamoa that the TMSA, which corresponds to Tamoa's service area, is perhaps too large. And so, I think there needs to be some discussion on that. I would like to see levels of services established for sewer and Tamoa water, not these smaller community waters systems as its distinguishing characteristic of city growth versus unincorporated growth. I think the current discussion needs to be upgraded with discussion that just because a developer can pay for it out on these foothill neighborhoods doesn't mean that the city's going to give up its timing and phasing of growth. I'd like, within the annexation component, to be there some discussion about the residents. We've heard a bit from some unincorporated residents, and I think there is a way in an annexation policy to discuss residents existing there and some community character ideas. I think maybe it's more along the lines of, you know, you're going to annex if the character of that area is going to be different from the one of existing. I'd like the city to really think about ways to use its city services and those regionalized ones to help define community character between incorporated lands and unincorporated lands. I'm also concerned that the provision about financing new growth extend to a discussion of SADs as a financing mechanism. I think we've tried that in the Somerset Parkway area, and I'm concerned that perhaps SADs are not the most appropriate way to finance new growth. I think that's a very topical discussion that the city needs to have. So, that is those. One last comment, and I don't know if it was in the neighborhood design or in the streets and access. One is, I think we need some discussion about these large collector, single-family access roads that go up into the foothill neighborhoods. And I'm talking about the University Ridge Socrates. I mean, it just keeps going, and then, the next development up the foothills is going and going, and then, you have these big roads. And we saw that down where that Doral Academy Road, I think it was Bull Trail or Bull Rider. I think we have too many single-family streets that start out single-family, and then, they become collectors with a lot of conflict. And I think we need to get some policy guidance on that. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Jordan, it's now your turn, and then, we're going to go to Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you very much. One of the questions I did want to ask is that we are coordinating this with the county on some of the bumped-up areas. One of the public speakers mentioned it, and I thought that was an important comment to make. Is that something that we are coordinating with the county?
We do continue to coordinate. One of the concepts that, you know, in terms of an urban-rural interface issue that is going to be really key in helping us move forward was kind of in our design principles and our land use map, lots of compatibility policies. And then, really with our new land use map, being able to have some more nuanced land use categories that will help us better transition into the unincorporated county areas. Those are all concepts that have received support just to help us because, you know, as you know, those are areas that, as development occurs, generally have a lot of concerns associated with them.
Thank you very much. Again, noble job you guys have done, a tremendous amount here with a lot of detail. I did want to make sure that, you know, we are in a time when we're feeling the crunch. I mean, we are feeling the growth crunch for sure from a period of virtually nothing happening to a period where a lot is happening. Stuff that may have been entitled for many, many years, but is now coming in because that it's happening now in the city of Reno. And I just want to make sure that our development community doesn't become... And I just want to make sure that our development community doesn't become the bad guy through this process. You know, the developers are responding to growth, they're not creating it. And we, it's our job to make sure that they're placing it in the places that we most want them to and in the way we most want them to. And we would talk about incentives, we want to make sure that, you know, we would like to see the infill on the transit line that has an X percentage of affordability component to it, that's tough to pull off inside the McCarran Ring. Land is hard to find, it's difficult to develop. And I know nobody likes to hear the word incentive, but if we really are true about developing those types of projects within the McCarran Loop, we're going to have to get away from thinking that's a nasty word, because it's not happening without us getting creative to get the growth to be where we want it to be. And so I just, I just want to make sure this doesn't become pitting the development community or the road-building community against anything else. We want to make sure that we do this right, and they're our partners as we move forward.
All right. And McKenzie? Go right ahead, Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Unlike the previous document, this one I found very few things that I had comment on, but one key point to me that I think is utmost on a lot of people's minds, and nowhere in our infrastructure improvement section do we talk about stormwater and the stormwater system. And that's one of my big issues with our development part of it. The first part of it is that we've got different types of development, different areas that we're going to develop in that have to be addressed differently, and we don't, we don't break them out individually in that area or in the previous document we reviewed. But when we talk about supporting a continued investment, we're looking at infrastructure improvements, and we completely leave out stormwater, that's a major oversight, because that's a major issue in all areas of our community as we saw in January and February.
Would you see that as fitting in Guiding Principle two or four?
It's in four. It's where we, it's actually in 4.3.
The other council person?
Any other commissioners?
This is Naomi. Yeah.
Hold on one second, Councilwoman. Any other commissioners? Questions? No? Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Dorr, three minutes.
Yeah. Hopefully you'll tell me, I don't have a watch.
Oh, yeah. I'll let you know, definitely.
My, I'm going to mostly focus on issues of responsible and well-managed growth. In this section that deals with GP 2-3, which is annexation and sphere of influence, we just had a project that kind of put this front and center. I think we should incorporate the concept in their buffers, which gets to some of the points that the speakers made, as well as the issues that came up in that development and almost every development that I've experienced that where city and county meet, is that we have to figure out is a buffer, you know, one house wide, one acre wide, or is it hundreds of feet, or is it even whole, you know, 20 or 40 acres? So like to see that addressed in there. Under the section that deals with infill and redevelopment, I'd like to see the concept of connectivity put in there. That was a pretty big achievement on the Ranchera project, was providing connectivity from one area to another, and connectivity from the development over to the school, and connectivity from the development over to the regional park. So I'd like to see that. Under GP 2.5, this is Goal 2.4 relating to regional entities, we are members of the Western Regional Water Commission, and we call out, talking about the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, but I also, there's also a regional water plan, and I think there's a section that deals with it, 2.4C, but I think we should actually name it since we're naming other plans. And I would really like to emphasize the regionalization of water. I think we have better water quality delivery. Two more things, this is under the sustainability development practices. Undertreated effluent, I think that whole sentence needs to be reworked. It only talks about using it inside. We have a big request for exporting reclaimed water, so somehow I think we should address that. And then in sustainable development, there's no mention, I hate to say, of trees, but we mentioned lots of things, including stormwater management. I think we should have a section called urban forest and green space and talk about the urban forest management plan that we've adopted, so that we get that on the page. There was one other one, and it was on water rights. This is on page 2-6, under Truckee River Water Rights. There is a heck of a long run-on sentence, and I'm not sure what it means, and we might want to rework that. It's all about water rights in Truckee, except here and there, and except we want to do this and that. So if we could break that out and try to get to some key principles, I think that would help. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
We do have a little bit more time, so if anybody else wants to jump in, anything that's confusing about the wording already, other concerns? Yes, Councilwoman?
I had a question. 2.4 and following about regional utility quarters, seems very wordy and lengthy. Are we maintaining the regional utility corridor plan? Is that still going to be in effect?
There, to the best of our knowledge, the regional utility corridor policies in the regional plan will be maintained in the update of the regional plan. These policies, or Policy 2.4F, yes, includes a variety of different components, and they are specifically designed to be in conformance with the regional plan. And we've definitely tried to pair back language where we could, but this is a component that we need to carry forward as is for conformance.
Okay, I guess just my, I appreciate that explanation. On that treated effluent, we've had a lot of discussion about that as of late, particularly at Tamoa. I see a future where effluent's going to be used internally in buildings. I think buildings are moving that way, and I think that that would be a good component to get in there. It's not only for site and irrigation. I think buildings are going to be designed with two systems, and I'd like to see that brought on. And then the one about Washoe County School District, I don't know that they have a site citing policies. And so I'd like to say, you know, we'll cite schools, but they want to advance our growth and infill priorities, their locational citing. I think that's been a, something that's been a missing ingredient where new schools are cited. And I'll just, you know, the Damani Ranch at the far end of the valley, I think, I think that partnership in 2.4 needs to be a little more addressed. Thanks.
Anybody else?
This is Naomi.
Uh, Councilwoman?
I have one more.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. On Goal 3.3, this is the revitalization of downtown economy and built environment. Mr. Reno already talked about historic preservation, but I thought this was an excellent place to put in that rubric of preserve, minimize, mitigate. We just talk about support relocation in lieu of demolition when reuse is not feasible, but preserve and avoid should be the first thing we do, so I think we should just put that sentence in there, too. Thanks.
All right. The one thing I do want to say is, to really take into serious consideration, a lot of the public comment you heard today, I think it was incredibly valid. And, you know, as we continue to move forward, we have, we will face a lot of challenges. And it's important that we do everything we can to make sure that they are being heard and part of their concerns are definitely, need to be addressed in this master plan. I just want to stress that. Any other questions? Mr. Hawkins, would you like to provide anything?
One thing I brought up during one of our workshops was the importance of establishing some sort of policy where we don't kick people out of buildings again when a developer wants to develop and then backs out on what he wants to do, and then we've got 100 people homeless. That's something that bothered me when I heard about that. That's my main concern.
So I, obviously, that's been a huge concern of this council, and we have been addressing that extensively. So Mr. Bill Thomas, go right ahead.
That particular issue is going to be a challenge for us, because one of the things we have to be careful with our regulations is we don't encourage people to do that before they even talk to us. In other words, if we're not careful by the way we handle it, we may find people emptying buildings before they even show up at the city. So it's, it's an important objective, we just need to be real careful how we do it.
All right. Anything else? Any other commissioners, council members? Seeing that there are none. All right. Do you have any more information you want to share? No? Okay. With that being said, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Tammy Holt Still would like to speak. Great.
I'm back again. Listening to the conversation, a couple things that I had noted. First of all, outdoor activities. You were saying that it's something that everybody's wanting. Well, we live out in the rural area because we want those outdoor activities. We have quads, we have livestock, we do our own little farming. And when you decide to bring in homes like up on, above Oregon, on Lemon Drive, by Ramsey, and that's going to be condensed housing, and there was also going to be condensed housing down by Arkansas, then you want to turn around and you want to add commercial jets coming in and landing at the Sted Airport, where's the quality of life in that? That's not what we signed up for. That is not what we bought out there for. You're encroaching on our lifestyle, and it's something for you as a commission, as the city, since you want to grow and you want to take property, you need to look at what you're doing to your neighbors. It is very important. Again, we go back to the Sted, the Sted Sewer Plant, and your affluent water's there. We had a wet winter, you had too much affluent water in there, it flooded the homes, and you saw the pictures of one of the ladies that is still out of her home because there's too much water around it. One of the things I wanted to suggest, I know it's part of this, but as far as quality of life, help do something with that lake, dredging it, putting out aspirators to help get rid of some of the actual water. I don't understand why you guys aren't doing that at the Sted Sewer Plant right now. You have land, you should be putting aspirators up so that it can put the affluent water in the air and evaporate. That would make a big help, too. So there's different things out there that can be done that, for quality of life, as being suggested here, needs to be looked at. And when people are asked to be involved that and have actually addressed to be involved and are ignored, that doesn't help either. That actually hinders your situation. It makes people angry. So we want to be involved, we want to be helpful, we understand there's going to be growth, but there can be a quality of growth.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Mayor Gal Morris, followed by Danny Cleus.
I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, this hearing. I have a very strong feeling that something that's very important to this community to actually come to what you're here for is totally being ignored. And that's the homeless. Until we actually give them homes, you're going to have the same problem. It doesn't matter how much development you get downtown or elsewhere, you have to do something with that. And I've read in the newspaper that you've hired outside experts to deal with this, and I don't know if it was the city council that did that, but somebody in the community has done that. And it's like, we already have the experts that are already working with the homeless, and you need to get those different agencies working together. I mean, I read a lot of news from different states of how successful they are in this sort of thing, and it's amazing to me that they're really accomplishing things, and it's because they're talking to each other. We don't need to spend extra money for outside specialists. That's what you guys are here for. You are our specialists. It would have to do with how much parking is necessary for the building that's being built, but I see so much land dedicated to parking when it could be underground of the building that they're building. And I think you really ought to make that a priority. Our land is too important to use it for parking spaces. Mayor Shivey, you've talked about the blight in this town. One of the biggest blights in this town is signage. It's like, it doesn't appear to me that there's actually any regulations to signage. I see windows filled up with cigarette and beer signs. I see posts literally this big round, holding up huge signs, probably 60 feet up into the air. Why? I mean, people coming from the airport don't need to be able to see that the motel is 10 blocks down the road. Most people have that sort of thing on their, on their smartphones. I want to ride my bicycle, but there's too much traffic on the roads. We have lots of alleys, maybe we can convert alleys into places where people can ride bicycles and make that a contiguous circuit for people. I also want us to quit offering subsidies to businesses that are well-capable of paying their own way. They already want to be here, you don't have to give us away anymore. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, our last public comment is from Danny Cleus.
I just want to say this. I invite everyone out to my house. I'll take you around and show you what you're doing to our area. I'll take you all the way from Cold Springs to Panther Valley. That's the parts that I'm concerned with. I'll let you see what we're living through right now. This is going on month six. Everything you guys do, just remember, it's not the Truckee River, it's not the Steamboat Creek. We live in closed basins, so everywhere you build, that water comes to us, doesn't go anywhere else. It sits there. It sits there, and it sits there. We're not getting rid of it. Nobody knows how to get rid of it anymore. Too much building, too much backwardness, according to our highways, our schools, our policing, it doesn't, doesn't mean just city of Reno, it's Washoe County, period. But since we're backed up to city of Reno, or next-door neighbors to city of Reno, it's part of your problem, too. It's not just Washoe County's problem. Everywhere you guys build, it comes to me, comes to my neighborhood. My house is still red-tagged. I'm living in my house. How many of you guys would do that? How many of you guys would actually sit there and sit there and wonder, when is that wall going to break and all the water's coming back into your neighborhood again? It's been too long. You guys got to figure out the little stuff before you bring in the big stuff. Figure it out. I bet you if you told these warehouse, these developers that they had to pave or take care of one mile of 395, it wouldn't happen. Instead, you want to tax us to fix the problem, for these guys to make money. Not nice. You got to remember where I live. I live on a one-acre lot. There's some people in my area that live on two to five-acre lots. We don't want suburbs out there. We don't want people that are right next to each other. That's a nice word to us. We live out in the country. We like it, it's peaceful. Right now, it's a mess because of all the building. Everybody wants to blame the weather for it. Well, let me tell you what, January, we didn't have a record year. February wasn't a record year either. It wasn't until March. So quit blaming the weather, blame the right thing. And again, I invite every one of you out to my house. I live on Tupelo Street, everybody knows me. I'm easy to find, I'm usually there, unless I'm going to a county commission meeting or a city of Reno meeting. I invite you all. We'll go all day. I'll show you the problems that the city is committing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I have no further public comment.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask my counsel for a motion. Oh, oh, actually, sorry. We have--
We have a few more guiding principles to get to, and we'll go ahead and do another round of, of public comment and a final motion at the end, but I'll hand it over to Darcy to get us through those last few.
Great. We're getting close. So, Guiding Principle 5 really focuses on all aspects of the transportation system. We've talked a lot about connectivity in the context of neighborhoods and other types of issues, but this is really where the entire transportation system is addressed. And so I think, you know, the, the key focus here, and this has come out in some of our public discussions, a lot of people are, are big bike and pedestrian advocates, but we also have a lot of folks in the community who really, you know, desire the ability to continue to, you know, they want to get around. They, it's easy to drive in Reno, they want to be able to do that in the future. And so, I think the balance between all modes is really something we've tried to address in the plan. There are certainly areas in the city where transit is the focus. We talked about the infill priority areas, but there are other areas that are, you know, going to continue to be auto-oriented due to availability of, of service and, and just functionality. So, the policies really address kind of roles and responsibilities related to different transportation components. And you'll also see a number of, of cross-references to a lot of the work that's been done in terms of, for example, your Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, which was a joint effort with the City of Sparks and RTC. So trying to really bring in that work that's been done that guides some of these specific improvements. So, this section also deals with kind of the management of the system in terms of, of how do we make the most of the resources that we have in terms of, of our existing infrastructure? And also thinking about how transportation is changing. There's always a lot of discussion in, in meetings like this today about kind of how, you know, automated vehicles and other types of transportation innovations are really going to change the future. And so I think at this point, we're kind of planting a seed for those conversations, recognizing that that's something the city is going to need to be aware of and, and kind of partner with others in the region. And it's also an area for innovation. You've got a lot of research opportunities. People focus on different types of technologies in the region, so we really see that not just as a kind of a functional need, but also something that's a real opportunity that could be looked at. So, in terms of what we heard, I think that, you know, the balance is really something. We've talked a lot about the support for pedestrians and bikes, but definitely the need to balance those modes. The concept of the missing links, I think, is really crucial to this conversation. There are a lot of areas where, you know, it may be a small section of the overall network that can be fixed. And so those are kind of easy wins in terms of trying to create that connected system. So, that's something we focus on. You know, a lot of different perspectives on, you know, either enhancing transit or putting less focus on that. So, we've heard a, a lot of different perspectives on this particular subject. GP 6 is, deals with our safe, healthy, and inclusive community. And this is really an area where many of these topics are areas that the city is really kind of plays a, a support role. These are not areas necessarily that the city is beyond kind of public safety and those types of issues, where the city is really kind of directly driving the conversation. For example, this is the section where we deal with education. We're also dealing with local food policy, and you did receive a memo in your packet from the Local Food Policy Group. We met with them, and we've incorporated a lot of comments. Health and wellness, that's an area we heard in the public comment concerns about, how are we dealing with homelessness? This is an area in the policies where we talk about the role of other groups in the region that you're working with. This is not an issue that the city can solve alone. And there are a number of efforts that the city's working on currently and, and, and over time. And so we're trying to reflect that here. The implementation strategies, we'll really start to get into some of those specific things. Matt talked about the housing kind of strategy piece of that and sort of trying to pull in some of the work that's being done, but also what some of those next steps might be. So definitely something we've heard, we're, you know, trying to address in the context of this master plan. And in terms of, uh, some of the other things, you know, I think we've touched on a lot of these already, but collaboration is definitely one of the key themes here. So in terms of what we've heard in this particular area, another theme here of climate change, climate adaptation, and sustainability, food policy, you know, a lot of specific comments related to things from, you know, as specific as, you know, we really need to kind of build in the seismic considerations, and certainly concerns about the homeless population were things that we've heard frequently in our discussions with the community. GP 7 addresses really all the kind of quality of life considerations within the community. So there's a lot of different themes here. Everything from natural resource protection to arts and culture, access to the outdoors in terms of public lands, and maintaining those access points, and being really cognizant of the value that that brings to the community, both within the city as well as in the county, and thinking about our historic preservation and those assets. And then, the question came up earlier about, you know, where are we addressing trees? And there's really, there's a goal here, a set of policies that really deal with the work that the city's been doing here in terms of the relief campaign and the, the urban forest plan that was recently passed last year. So we do have that addressed. And then thinking about the public realm. This was something early on, I think, that's kind of come in in some of the public comments we've heard here tonight about just sort of how are we taking care, you know, what, what people see and experience as they move through the city? And, and really wanting to make sure that we're staying on top of maintenance, thinking about some of those more character-defining features, and, and not just building them, but making sure we have the ability to maintain them. So in terms of, of what we've heard, I think, strong support for all of the topics in this particular section. I think in some cases, you know, as you, as we saw through the food policy memo, a desire for maybe to go further. And those are things we can certainly discuss and would love to get direction from you all on, but we've tried to address the comments we've heard in terms of trying to strengthen those. There were a lot of really great specific comments that were made that we took into account. So, the other area in particular we heard a lot of discussion about was, you know, really that arts and culture should be reflected at the guiding principle level. We had a, a meeting focused on the guiding principles last May, when we kind of came up with that framework. And that was really based on the face, Phase 1 feedback, but that's something that we would like direction from the group tonight on specifically, since that's kind of a foundational piece that we had, we had kind of gotten buy-off from this group on last, last year. We want to kind of get your take on that before any changes are proposed there, but certainly something that we heard from the community. And then the last one, effective government. And this is a new section in the plan, and I think this is really kind of depend, based on the concept that the master plan, I talked earlier about, there's a broader set of policies that are addressed here. It's no longer really just kind of a, land use is definitely the foundation of the plan, but it's really become a broader plan in terms of policy guidance for the city vision as a whole. And so, the, the institution, by institutionalizing the plan in the day-to-day workings of the city, the ability to implement that vision is going to be more successful. And so it's really going to take buy-in and support from, from all folks working in the city. I mentioned earlier, kind of our work with the different departments and sort of, you know, everyone working under, obviously there's going to need to be more specific plans in certain cases, but really recognizing this as sort of the umbrella plan that guides day-to-day decision-making in the city. And so, this section talks about kind of some of the components of that. And I think in terms of what we heard, there's been strong support for the master plan vision, particularly in our, our discussions in April. And I think really just a desire to see increased accountability and people saying, you know, I really like what this says, I really want to see this happen, and how are we going to do that? And, you know, can we count on this to, to kind of be followed? And so, I think this section really kind of supports that desire from the community and, and provides a foundation for those discussions. So, I will stop there.
Alrighty, so this is going to be our final discussion. We are going to be going over Guiding Principles 5 through 8. You'll notice on the slide above that Guiding Principle 7 has been acknowledged kind of separately. That's just taking into account that there's been call for more discussion and teasing out of that guiding principle to make sure everything is heading in the right direction. Keeping in mind, time-wise, that we still need to touch on 5, 6, and 8. So, we'll, we can jump wherever, but just keep in mind that we have time to go back to that guiding principle if necessary. Would anyone like to kick us off?
Go right ahead. I'll start with you, and then I'll just kind of, we'll go this way. All right, go, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I've been particularly silent thus far, because I would say that on, on, on the whole, I'm very impressed with the work that's been done. And having watched the evolution of, of these documents recently, I'm impressed with the balance that's been struck. And so I'll, I'll kick off kind of this discussion just with a brief touching on the food policy input that's been given. And similar to so many other interested parties, i- i- it's great how much of this sort of input has been incorporated into this, into these documents, and I've seen that evolve. But I think similar to what Councilman Brekka said, you know, on, on first blush, some of these might be a little bit too specific. In terms of the overall balance of relative weight and value of all these different ideas that are here, and so I think so much of that, I give kudos to the drafters because I think that a really good balance has been struck. That said, and I think leading into this issue of, of the Guiding Principle 7 title, what I'm particularly impressed with, with the items in GP 7, is how much of a step forward I'm seeing based on that starting vision that we heard at the very beginning that Reno is a place for outdoor activities. And I would say, you know, certainly the other two pieces are very important, arts and culture, college town, et cetera. And those elements are here in the plan as well. But the outdoor piece has a particular, provides a particular foundation for land use policies that I wanted to see take shape as we got further into this process. And I think where we are with how GP 7 is laid out strikes that appropriate balance and really kind of calls forward that if that really is our vision for this town, and we heard it resoundingly from citizen input, then we need to be serious about our land use approach based on that. And so, issues of, of, you know, trail connectivity, open space, the idea of, of, you know, the importance of hydrological resources, the things that are here in GP 7, I, I, I think are, are, are very good. And so I, I'd be hesitant to make any changes to what the draft, the decisions that were reflected in, in this draft right here.
And then you said that you didn't have any issues with the titling of the guiding principle, or--
I'm saying going with what you got.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Anybody else want to jump in?
Great. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe this is an appropriate time to share a comment with City Council and our Madam Mayor as a whole for all eight items. And based upon policy, and the policies that are being proposed, I believe that staff and our consultants and the input from the community has been put together in a rough document to date, but a document that is being refined and is very concise. And although it's policy and not ordinance, many of the policies that are being proposed are only going to be effective policies if you, Madam Mayor, and you, the City Council, back them with manpower and finances and equipment or materials for lots of different departments within the city. It's, just as you said earlier, the comments that were made by the citizens this evening and this afternoon are very important, and, and they hit that nail right on the head. We, as a planning commission, can review it, review a project, and we can take the recommendations from our staff reports that policy is being looked at, is being considered, and ordinances are being met, and we can approve it. But it's not going to work if, if it's not supported financially in future budgets. Thank you.
Fantastic comments. Thank you very much. Mr. Schneider, anything? No?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chuck Reno.
Yes, thank you. I agree with Councilman Bobzian and Commissioner Wieske. There's, um, this is a rough draft, and we're, and we're getting there, we're getting there. And I think that we're really getting what the community wants, is really what they, it's what they want, and we're getting on paper. On, on item 6.5, this is the food policy stuff, there was a lot of, a lot of discussion in our workshop on this, and, and the next one, 6.6 as well. But 6.5, I'm glad that there's been some changes and tweaks there. Again, I think it may be really too specific. I mean, there might be a little too much in here as far as implementation, that probably should come in a different phase. But one thing I didn't see in here that I wish I, I would see is, is the gleaning, or a gleaning policy, where, you know, in my first, you know, growing up, my parents had peaches and, and pears and apples and so forth, and we would give them away to anybody and everybody that would take them. Our first house, my wife and I, we had a black walnut and, and a Bing cherry tree, and, and we would try to give them away, and people would come and, and we'd say, "Come, take our food," you know? And there is a lot of great old-growth food out there that could be taken without having to do a lot of new supporting infrastructure and so forth. And I think if, if, if there was some talk about some gleaning in here, that would be great. And, and I'm glad for at least, goal 6.6 on the inclusivity. I always liked 6.6 C and D, and I'm glad B has a little bit more, uh, change in text there. I thought it was a little wordy and a little difficult, but overall, it's been good.
Great suggestions. I love that. I wish I was your next-door neighbor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do, I want to echo what I've heard from everybody about the, the work that staff has done on this. I know from the planning commission's side, you know, there is a, there is a limited amount of city governance that comes before us. I mean, we, we do not see the level of interaction with the community that council does. But I think a lot of the things that have been brought up tonight are things that we have been hearing as well. And I think as the commission has really worked through these policies, we've been looking at them in terms of how they can help clarify and direct us on the decisions that we're making. I think that's, a lot of the, the items that have come before us from public comment have been talking about issues that maybe have not been clear in the past, or have not been things that we can really respond to, or, I guess, make findings on in the way that some of the feedback has, has asked for. And I think what we've really seen from the feedback that has come in from the community, and what has found its way into both the, the design principles and the policies, is really clarification on the items that the public comment has been asking for. And it's giving us the direction to be able to make findings, and as Commissioner Wieske said, to develop ordinances that identify that as the community priorities in, in ways that hasn't happened before. So, again, there's a lot of things in here that are beyond our scope, but I know that the, the, the same effort has been put to those as, as on ours. And then the last thing I will say is, again, on Guiding Principle 7, the title of that was a huge discussion. I think we spent quite a bit of time during our workshop going over some of the options, and, and I've continued to think about it since then. And I, I think I would echo Councilmember Bobzian's comments, that the initial title that we approved is still, I think, the best way to title that in terms of, of the policies that we have.
Great.
So, that's it, thank you.
All right, excellent comments. Well done. All right, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you very much. I will be brief. I, too, agree that the current titling is appropriate for a number of reasons, but I'm not going to beat that horse any further. A couple of things, there was, and probably this is getting a little into the weeds on a, a couple of items, but I did want to speak to one of the public commenters today about homelessness. I'll put a shameless plug that tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., our sixth class of the Reno Works program graduates. Reno Works is a 10-week program where individuals from the homeless shelter help the community, they clean up areas of our community, the parks along the river corridor, they paint public facilities, and they learn life skills. And at the end of that, they're, they have full-time employment, and they are assisted with housing. So we have, I'm going to probably get the number wrong, but I think we're at 38 people in the last year and a half that we have transitioned off the streets, out of the shelter. And-- in the last year and a half that we have transitioned off the streets, out of the shelter, and back on their feet. So we're very proud of that program. And there's a group of about 10 of us going up from the county and from the city to look at the tiny home villages up in Seattle. They have five of them. And we want to see, you know, their little 10 by 10 structures. But I too agree that if someone doesn't speak up for our most vulnerable, nobody will. And we need to make sure that we are incorporating that population in all the things that we do, and we don't forget about it. So I did want to comment to that. My last comment is to the, two things. The bike routes and the pedestrian plan, the bike and pedestrian plan, great plan. Someone suggested the other day though, which I'm saying it here, so maybe it'll filter its way back to RTC, because I just heard it at the pedestrian and traffic safety summit, where not only do they identify the bicycle paths through neighborhoods, connectivity and those sorts of things, but they rank it on its difficulty. So they rank it on, based upon vehicle interface, they base it on topography, and it can be, you know, hard, medium, or easy, which I know, I am an easy bike rider. I'm not someone who wants to interface with a lot of traffic, or go up a lot of hills, or that sort of thing. So I thought that was a very good suggestion that we may want to speak about. The increased accountability and transparency, I, I think that is critical. I think nobody wants to see another study on a shelf that's not being followed and we're not being held accountable to, including all of our level staff and everything that we do, from these policies that we adopt, or whether it's how we receive applicants for boards or commissions, and how they're vetted and brought to us. I think it's important that we remain consistent and transparent in that process. So I think that's critical, and I agree with those points, and I appreciate that being part of the, part of the master plan.
All right, great. So we so, we hope to see you here tomorrow at 11:00 for that graduation. You will be inspired, it's pretty phenomenal. Okay, so moving right along, Commissioner Olivas, anything you'd like to add? Nothing? Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just two quick points on section, our goal 5.3, truck traffic. I don't know if anybody else has got this problem, but in my ward, we have a major problem with truck traffic in residential areas. So somewhere in these, we need to clarify that we're not going to make that error in, in approving commercial or, or industrial areas without a route to get to them that's not through a residential area. Now, we have areas up there that they can get to without going through residential, and they won't do it anyway, but that, that's another issue. And then in, in 6.1, there's a, a discussion about, in the fire section, about there being a funding mechanism, or the, the development community coming to the table with a funding mechanism for services, but we don't have the same in the police. And I, I think that that ought to be an overreaching of all public safety, is that, that we have the funding mechanism available before we allow the development. So we've got to, they, those services that we provide, we have to have a way to fund those services before we allow the government, the, so we probably need to do economic studies on development, especially the sprawled development, to assure that we have the financial wherewithal to provide the services we need to provide before that can move forward. And again, those are things that these guiding principles tell us we need to do, it's going to be incumbent upon this council to follow up with something to make that something the planning commission can use to, to affect that. But if it's not in the guiding principles, we don't have the cattle prod in our ribs telling us, we've got to come up with something to, to help them enforce it.
The funding first. All right, Mr. Ed Hawkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of my biggest concerns, I've been vocal about it for a long time, is protecting our open spaces. And we need tighter, whether it's regulations, ordinance, or the language itself, in not allowing the reversion of open space back to buildable space. That shouldn't be tolerated. Thank you.
All right, good, good point. Excellent. Councilwoman Brekis.
Okay, thank you, Madam, okay.
You'll go last, Councilwoman Doer.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
In section 5, 5.1 funding, it says, "Continue with bond projects and other publicly funded programs." I'm not so, so sure that that conflicts with RTC policy. RTC bonded the Southeast Connector, they've always been Pago, but my understanding is there's a desire to be Pago, so I think that should be looked at. I would like to see under 5.2, "System Maintenance," I think that's strong, but I think it should say prioritize funding also, get a funding thought in there. I think there needs to be a little bit more about filling in sidewalk gaps. I hear so much about, at subdivision matchups, or, you know, just a lot here or there, that the sidewalk gaps are done, and I think our public works department struggles on that when they do sidewalk projects. Mr. McKenzie's discussion about truck traffic, I think brings up another issue that I haven't seen too much discussion here, some guidance about when 24-hour operations are, are advantageous. It's missing, and we all know it's an issue that the planning commission has wrestles with forever, so I think we need to get there. I think there also needs to be some, related to the pedestrian health of the community, some commentary about judicious consideration of oversizing right-of-way and intersections. Sometimes we get so excited, we're going to improve this intersection, or so on, and then I hear on the back end from cyclists and pedestrians, what a bad thing that was for them. And number six, I'm not so sure that it's a best practice to call out minute response times for fire and police in a master plan. I see a nod from one of our staff members, so I'd like that revisited and some commentary on that. One thing the Ward 1 has, have been working on is neighborhood resiliency. And I've done research, and I don't see any examples of communities dealing this, with this, but I think we have so many different types of vulnerabilities, that I would like some commentary about understanding at the neighborhood level, your envi, your risks and resiliencies to whether it's climate change, earthquake, flooding, wildland fire, bless you. So, all that.
Before we move too far past those points, how about we give the commissioners a chance to respond to those two things before we get to?
Some of the staff? Okay. That's fine, as long as it doesn't go against my moments.
So just quickly, Bill Thomas for the record. The, setting the standards specifically in the master plan, the risk of that is that, are they aspirational or are they regulatory? And since funding is the key decision-maker on the service level for police and fire, which are our biggest expenses, we just need to be honest with ourselves when we say those things, are they aspirational or are they regulatory? Because it makes no sense to say if we have a standard for our most expensive services that is above and beyond what we can actually afford, then we kind of create a quagmire for ourselves. So that's the only point I was going to make about putting in the master plan, service levels that mayor may not be attainable.
Okay, so I guess, I'm incurring some concurrence with my thought. Another thing that didn't come up is, I think we need some guidance on premature parceling. We see a lot of parceling where someone parcels out the bad land, the 30% slope, and then we have a requirement to develop on that, and I think we need some consideration there. That's something I've noticed for a lot of years, and I think we need to catch up in ordinance on that. I concur with Mr. Bobzien on the discussion of number seven, and I'd just like to add that, as much as, you don't put too much fiscal in here, but as much as we are aspirational about open space, parks and recreation, and even Ms. Doer, who's always talking about trees, that's where we're greatest lacking funding sources. So we need to marry that up also, and acknowledge that we are at a big gap on that. And I think that's a huge issue that needs to go forward. In terms of 7.5, I'd also like a new 7.6 acknowledging that there is historic value in the original plating of older areas. The plating, the urban design is important. And I'm very pleased to see, following number eight, goal eight, I would like, though, some organization, some recognition that we also have sub-neighborhood advisory board levels of organization in our community, whether they're HOAs or small business districts. And also in terms of the state legislation, I'd also like to see that discussed with, you know, an opportunity for them to help us maintain and expand our services and have autonomous ability to raise revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Gower, go right ahead.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanted to echo the comments thus far and thank, really applaud, actually, the effort that staff and the planning commission, my fellow commissioners, and the council have gone through to solicit community input. I mean, it's been a monumental outreach effort, and a lot of what I've heard over the past year from the community is in the plan. And I think that's really exciting, to see it, and to have it be in policy language. So kudos for that. Some of the feedback that I've heard, and this kind of goes to what Commissioner, or Councilman McKenzie was saying, is this is great at the policy level, but what next? Let's talk about implementation on the ground. And my response is, we've got to have a framework first to get to implementation. And in my opinion, this is a fantastic framework that gives us the platform to do implementation work that the planning commission can use for decision-making, and that we can rely on, and the flow of our decisions can flow all the way through to the master plan level. So I think that's really important. And just one more thing that I wanted to comment on, and Commissioner Bobzien might remember this, about two years ago, you asked me to be on the climate group, citizens group, and I proudly served on that. And I'm happy to see a lot of the recommendations related to climate resiliency, climate change mitigation, sustainability, make it into the document. It's a huge thing for the community, we've had a ton of community input, so seeing that in there and having, again, that, that framework and that platform for decision-making in that arena is really exciting for me. So, thanks.
Good one. Critical. Go right ahead. He's going to take all the credit.
I just want to express thanks for your observation. I have made the same observation, I take great pride in it, but, you know, ultimately, it was easy setting that up. I mean, there's never been a question about the mayor's support and the council's support for doing that work, and so we are seeing, seeing the fruits of that. And I remember even some skepticism from some of those folks that were involved in that first effort, that, you know, are we ever going to see this in a master plan update?
Yeah. There you go. And do you want to get to Councilwoman Doer? Wait, hold on a second. Councilwoman Doer, are you there?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Okay. I just wanted to pick off, up on that last comment. I thought, I was so pleased myself to see the sustainability threaded throughout this document. I feel like the sustainability issue is so important, and I shared this with the consultant and planning team, that I actually thought we should have a nice general, or guiding principle, which was sustainability. It's kind of like, it's, it's in everything, and yet the word is not really mentioned as a high-level guiding principle. And it's just something I thought we should talk about or think about, you know, not just having it there, but actually saying the word, and kind of pulling some guiding principles or some major goals together in its own unit. That's how important I thought it was, so, just some food for thought. We had three legs of our stool through the Reimagined Reno process, we had university and innovation, the great outdoors, and arts and culture. And I really felt that somewhere in this document, towards the front, there should be at least an explanation of that, you know, that outcome of the Reimagined Reno process, and that those three were sort of key elements that we, we tried to, to hit on. So I really thought somehow we should incorporate that into this document. And then on the piece on arts and culture, I was so pleased to see arts and culture threaded throughout the document as well, and I think it was treated very well in this section seven. As to wordsmithing, I'm not too wound up about what words are used, except to, to one concern, which is that we do at least mention the word university in the guiding principles, we do at least mention the word outdoor in these guiding principles. We may want to put the word arts, arts, culture, you know, quality places, arts, culture, and outdoor recreation opportunities, only because it was so very important to the community. And those are the people that have had short shrift, not the people, but those issues have had short shrift over the years, and it's a huge change over the last five years, I would say, maybe goes back a little longer. So those are some thoughts, just to recap, maybe should sustainability be mentioned as a guiding principle? Do we want to incorporate these three legs of the stool somehow in this document? And then, do we want to heighten by using the word art somewhere in these guiding principles? So those are some thoughts for the next round, but thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we wrap up?
I just, I wanted to say that I've been on a concern, a kick of concern about our air quality threats from a regulatory perspective, and there's so much we can't do, you know, with California burning, you know, with climate changing, you know, with the Sierra trees, we've been so inundated, and I think that section needs to get strengthened a little bit. And I also think that there's perhaps some confusion on some, and maybe some diagnosis of what's an economic development incentive, and what's a land use incentive, because they are very different, and I think that they should be, you know, defined each uniquely. Do you, Mr. President?
For the, and within the implementation plan, we'll provide some more clarity into the differences between land use and then business incentives.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say thank you to our planning commission for the heavy work you've done, to the consultants team and the staff. I, from the economic debate, data analysis to the community engagement, this process has exceeded my expectations. I'm, I'm very excited about it, and thank you to my colleagues and all the upper, the staff that's worked on it so much. I'm, I'm really looking forward to our next meeting in July.
That's nice, that's very, very appreciated. Thank you for recognizing them.
So just, just as a, a point of, excuse me, point of clarification, I, I know we're kind of wrapping things up, but from a staff perspective, one of the things that we were looking for was, was to get a little bit of guidance in terms of the guiding principles, just because they are really the organizational component of our citywide policies. And so as we continue to work on revising policies, thinking about our implementation strategies, we're, we are looking for a little bit of guidance in terms of the stability and the overall organization of the plan. So if we are going to be making kind of changes, you know, adding guiding principles potentially, or changing titles, we just want to make sure that we can adequately reflect that with the policies and then those implementation strategies. So we were looking for just, just a little bit of clarification there today, in terms of those larger discussions.
All right.
Madam Mayor, if I-
Councilman Bobzien likes, wants to address this. Go right ahead.
If, if I might, and, and just sort of returning to my opening comments during this section, and being very sensitive to the needs of staff to keep this moving, and this orchestra of input that you have up here trying to make sense of it all, we can continue to refine, I think we've heard areas in which we can try to strengthen different policies. I would concur with Councilwoman Brekis, I share the same concern on, on air quality and the fact that we maybe needed to look at that one in particular. But, you know, this is not, this is, I think, a classic case of, we don't want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I am very comfortable with the eight guiding principles that are here and how they are worded. I certainly appreciate Councilwoman Doer's desire to maybe pull sustainability out and make it's, its own thing. I would counter with an argument, though, that I am heartened that these themes of sustainability are found throughout the plan, and I would, I would be hesitant to try to segregate them and put them in some other place. And I do see that there's been tremendous movement in, in, in trying to make sure that the, the arts piece of this is strengthened, in, in acknowledgement that that was one of the, the three visions. But, but I don't, I don't, it seems like a square peg, round hole situation, where I think the balance of the eight that we have and the titles that they've been given, I, I, I think is a pretty good balance, and I'd be, I'd be loathe to depart from this in, in the spirit of trying to keep staff moving toward the end goal.
Well, I guess I'll respond.
Sounds like a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we, we proceed forward with the eight guiding principles that we have, but that modifications needed, similar to how we handled the, the last document.
He just wants to get into adjournments. That's his favorite motion, so that's where he's trying to go with that.
I'd like to hear from Ms. Doer.
Hold on, Councilwoman Brekis. I'm going to, hold on, everyone, please, just give me a minute. Councilwoman Doer, I want you to be heard, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say I'm fine with that. This is a conversation and a dialogue, and it's not advocacy for wordsmithing. I already acknowledged that I was extremely happy about the threading through sustainability. I just said, since it's a guiding prin- I just said, since it's a guiding principle, I just didn't want it to be missed. If someone opens up this document, and they just read across, you know, and maybe it's something that should be addressed in an opening section, right there with the three legs of the stool, and the focus on sustainability, I mean, that would do it for me, is just laying out what guided the development of this plan, whether it's in executive summary, whether it's at the front end of this piece. So, I just want to be clear, it's not like that when, you know, while we did or didn't change the wording, it's more that we're having a conversation, and we're talking about how to communicate to the public what was important to us when we were putting together this plan. Thanks.
Okay. Great. Great comments. Thank you very much. Before I even accept that motion, any other council members? Okay. Seeing that there are no other comments, Madam Clerk, do you have public comment?
Madam Mayor, I believe I have general public comment.
Yes.
Would you like to go now instead?
I can go now.
We have public comment now.
Okay.
From David Ingersoll.
Go right ahead, and then we'll take the motion.
Hi, David Ingersoll, again. This is the first meeting I've attended, and I am very impressed, very impressed. And I also wanted to thank you all and staff for your public service. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming. That's so nice. No one ever gets a public comment and says they're impressed. Can you come every meeting? We'll all feel so much better about ourselves. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Honestly, thank you. Okay. All right. So, Councilman Bobzien gave me a motion, and I believe Councilmember McKenzie was quick to second it. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. I'm going to hand it over to you, Commissioner.
I'm going to turn it over to the chair.
Oh. Go right ahead. Commissioner Gower, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Step into my chair role. Commissioner Johnson was doing such a good job today, I snuck in at the end. Appreciate him filling in.
I don't know, I was giving him mints, and then I think he got kind of offended, like, what are you trying to say to me? I give them to everyone. Nothing personal.
So, Commissioner is looking for a motion to uphold our recommendation to City Council for the master plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wieski.
Thank you. I move to approve staff recommendation as written, keeping number seven as is, as it's been proposed by City Council and accepted by them.
Thank you very much. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Reno, I'll second that motion.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous.
Unanimously. Nice. Okay. So, this one is item D, and it's special just for Councilmember McKenzie.
You've got to ask for public comment, please.
Oh, do we, and any more public comment? I thought we just took general public comment.
We have none, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Now I'll move.
Right. I have a motion from Councilmember McKenzie to adjourn. I have a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Gower.
Planning Commission, motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for joining me.